Hello, hello.
Hello. Can you hear us?
I can. How everybody doing today?
Great, but wish you were here.
I know.
Director Hollins, Director Green?
What's good, everybody?
Can't hear Director Green very well.
Can you hear me better now?
This meeting of the Board of Education for November 16, 2021 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tab. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome the Board, the superintendent, staff, families, students, and guests. And I want to take a brief moment to acknowledge the incredible victory of the Grant Girls soccer team who earned the title of 6A state champions this weekend.
Woo!
Woo! Go Generals! We look forward to recognizing them at our next board meeting.
We had some great performances in boys and girls cross-country as well, second and third in the state overall at Lincoln.
Woo! Go Cards! Sports first, business second. So I've asked Vice Chair Scott to chair tonight's meeting. And I'm making this small shift tonight into who facilitates our meeting for a couple of reasons. One is it models a distributive leadership. Secondly, it recognizes and attempts to interrupt this notion of a pointy hierarchy with a single person at the top, and it's low stakes and low calorie, I hope. It's lastly, a recognition that in order to make a difference in student outcomes, we will need to practice doing things differently and get comfortable doing things differently, applying different inputs to expect different outputs. And finally, I believe good leaders are self-aware and recognize when they need more time, more budget, more input, or, and they actually have the power to seek out those resources, including asking for help. This team, our board, is a resource I hope to continue to draw upon. I'm asking for those on the ship to help steer the ship. And I'm going to need your help. I've recently asked some of you to serve with me, some of you who serve with me for help, and I hope we can all agree that for the most part, we're in this together. I've, for instance, asked Directors Hollins and Director Scott, for instance, to lead the evaluation of the superintendent in a process that is co-created and that I hope will result in better outcomes for our students. And I've asked others of you to help me complete tasks that I recognize are bigger than me, take more talent than I have, or that require more time than I have. And I'm going to tuck my soapbox under my desk now. Before we get started, for certain, I'd like to begin tonight's meeting by taking a moment to reflect on Native American Heritage Month and to think about the land that we're sitting on today. Superintendent Guerrero, I understand we have a short video?
We do. Thank you, Chair DePass, and good evening, Directors. Buenas tardes to our listening audience out there. We do have a special video. We want to, it features Aisha Pertle-Wright, who is a student at NEA, who describes the importance of a land acknowledgement. And I want to take the moment to discuss our district's continued work in racial equity, social justice, to support Native American Heritage Month. As you know, our district's theory of action, in fact, specifically calls out, calls us to center our work on the experience of our Black and Native students. And a recurring question we continue to receive about, well, why focus and center on Native students, for instance, when they represent such a quote-unquote "small portion" of our student body? And I just want to be clear, we're going to continue to embrace our theory of action around Black and Native students and the reasoning behind it. What we hope that people will understand is, when we have success with these particular two student groups, they're tied to the success of every one of our students. So we're going to continue to learn to see our Native students, their gifts, talents, and potential, and we're going to continue to live up to the values and aspirations of our racial equity, social justice values. So without further ado, want to introduce this special video featuring Aisha Pertle-Wright. Thank you.
At PPS, we strive to strengthen our relationships with the Native community and Native nations. A symbol of this commitment is a land acknowledgement. These statements bring visibility to the first peoples of our collective home. This statement is meant to provide information and context while also encouraging all of us to reflect of our current-day relationship with Native peoples and the Native experiences. We acknowledge that we live, work, and play on the traditional land of the Chinook, Klaakamis, Kalapuya, Molnoma, Wasco, Klamathut, Toalaten, Olalla people. We also know that many other tribes made their homes along the Columbia and Willamette rivers. We honor their history and acknowledge the sacrifices that they made. Let us also acknowledge the robust, present-day federally recognized tribes of this area, the Grand Ron, Solets, and Kalletts tribes. In addition, I would like to acknowledge the Chinook Nation, who has been seeking federal recognition for many years. The urban Indian community is made up of tribal diversity that originates from around the country, representing 400 tribes. The urban Indian community has a vivid history, making up peoples whose journeys have brought them to Portland by the ways of forced displacement or seeking more opportunities. Today, these tribes and communities celebrate their heritage, showing resilience and tenacity that would be greatly admired by their ancestors. Within Portland Public Schools, today we serve students and families representing more than 150 different tribal nations within our educational system. It is our obligation to teach accurate information, past and present, about the impact of colonization on our students. All students today, and make invisible the multitude of Native families and the many diverse ways Native communities and families are living in the present. We encourage every person to reflect on their own history, understand the history of colonization and genocide, and support Indigenous sovereignty priorities and actions. This acknowledgement is one step that we can take to improve our support of Indigenous communities in this area. In addition to acknowledging the land and those who have been here since the beginning of time, we must also remember our stolen siblings from Africa, whose labor built the vast wealth of this country. These two communities and their atrocities committed against them are naturally intertwined due to our existence while within a white supremacist world. Everything we have is due to stolen land and stolen labor, and every system and institution that impacts our lives is built upon this legacy. It is our job to speak that truth into spaces that we can begin to heal.
Fabulous, Ms. Pertle-Wright, thank you, if you're listening. Thank you. As the district moves to incorporate the PPS land acknowledgement and anti-oppression statement into gatherings, meetings, and professional learning as much as possible in alignment with our district core values, vision, and strategic plan, I'd like to support the recommendation to display the statement at board meetings and welcome your thoughts on this. I'll turn it over now to Vice Chair Scott and ask that he let me know before he's going to ring this gavel, so I can move out of the way. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair DePass. And I appreciate the opportunity and happy to, happy to help out tonight. So with that, next, the board is going to vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you would like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Yes. Resolution 6406 was updated on the website earlier this afternoon.
6406?
Vice Chair Scott?
Yes.
I just want to get to the, I wasn't sure if you were asking the question then to flag it.
I'll go ahead and, yes, are there any items you'd like to pull?
Yeah, and I'm not going to flag it. I had a series of questions about the education elements contract, which is relating to the middle school miller grades. And I know it was a busy weekend for many and a busy last couple days, but I didn't get answers to that. And I'd like to request, I'm not opposed to the contract, but I'd like to get answers to who it, it wasn't clear who, who the cohorts were they're applying to, and I would just like to get my questions answered, so I'm just going to flag that contract as, and the request for responses.
Okay, are you looking to get your questions answered during the meeting tonight?
You know, I'm, it's not necessary, because again, I know people were busy over the weekend and then today, so I'm happy if I just get a commitment that I'll get a response that, that I don't need to ask them in a...
So you're comfortable moving forward with the consent agenda?
I am, and I'll share the responses with everybody else when I, when I get them.
Great, thank you. So do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Vice Chair Scott, if, if the board would like to hear a quick explanation, we do have our middle school redesign and innovation director in the virtual green room can give a quick byline on, on the contract if you want.
I'll defer to the board. My questions were, there's, there's a contract in there, and just, I know with the attention that we've had on the middle, the middle schools, there's a set of cohorts that are coming through, and then a second cohort, and I just had some questions about the work since it hasn't been elevated to the level, so...
Okay. If, if you're, I guess what I'll say is, if you're comfortable waiting for those until afterwards, are there any other board members that want to hear that today? Are we, are we okay moving on in the interest of time?
I'm okay to move on.
I'm okay to move on as well.
That's an email.
That works for me.
Perfect, thank you.
But I appreciate staff being ready, I just hadn't got a response, so I'll make sure.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any board discussion, any other board discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Okay, the board will now vote on Resolutions 6405 through 6408. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Okay, the consent agenda is approved by a vote of 7 to 0 with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Okay. We now turn to student and public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. First, the board thanks you for taking the time to attend this meeting and providing your comments. Public input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility of a board is to actively listen, and to that end, I would ask each of us to give our full attention to the people in front of us. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony, and we request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask you to, we ask you to email them to publiccomment@ppss.net. So again, publiccomment@ppss.net. Please make sure you begin your comment, when you begin your comment, that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to go ahead and conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we will start with Catherine Gentele.
Welcome, Catherine.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Catherine Gentele, G-E-N-T-L-E, and I'm a parent, a PPS parent. I attended the October 26 meeting where a strong opposition to the COVID-19 student vaccine mandate was made clear. I want to command, commend the board's most recent decision to stop the vote and delay any action for at least six months, as well for your commitment to honor non-medical exemptions consistent with the Oregon Health Authority's longstanding guidance. As the Oregonian's November 14th editorial accurately states, "This is the right call," and I concur with many of their points made. To quote, "The district's rush to require students to be vaccinated or face exclusion from school did not make sense. Neither the state or the county public health agencies are recommending such a requirement. The community has a fundamental obligation to provide a quality education to children, regardless of neighborhood, family beliefs, or background. It was only the persistent questioning by Board members Green, Hollins, and Brim Edwards about the unknown impact and lack of implementation plan that slowed the rush to adopt a requirement for the first place. The district should know who would be affected and potentially excluded by such a mandate, a key question for a district that values equity. PPS should not base long-term decisions off short-term conditions. The rationale for a mandate for children should not depend on case counts or doing at any one point in time. In reality, the reason to wait is so health officials can better understand the virus." And as the editorial concludes, "The district's delay on a vote, rather than dropping the proposal entirely, means these same concerns are likely to come up again soon. I implore the board to carefully reexamine the necessity to pursue a mandate in the coming months. And while there's much to celebrate, there's more work to be done. The board must recognize natural immunity and include tests to stay for the unvaccinated. These are viable options for school attendance and reduced absence. The current protocol for quarantine of the unvaccinated is discriminatory. There's no difference between the ability of the vaxxed and unvaxxed to catch or spread COVID, and spread in schools is rare. Surveillance testing in LA schools kept 33,000 children out of school. Of this, subsequent testing revealed a mere one-fifth of 1% tested positive for COVID. LA kept kids home unnecessarily. However, they learned, adapted, and implemented tests to stay, as did many other states. You must consider updating outdated quarantine rules for Portland Public Schools." I'll end by speaking to parents directly. No one supersedes your right to make medical decisions for your children. Right now, state agencies are meeting to decide on permanent COVID protocols and school immunization requirements. Though a vote is delayed now, a school mandate can come at any time. If you're unsure where to go and what your options are or who to talk to, I want to let you know about OregonSchoolPods.com. This website serves as our point of connection, information involving solutions for anyone facing uncertainty. Whether you're against mandates, experiencing undue burden from existing measures, looking for education alternatives, or want to connect with others of similar need, and stay in tune with evolving options, this site's for you. Visit or email today. Rise now and make your voices heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. We have Suzie Anglada Bartley.
Great, welcome.
Yes, I guess my time will start now. My name is Susan Anglada Bartley. I want to first just thank you for hosting me and also let you know that I just got home from work. I am a 20-year veteran teacher, 19 years in PPS, and one year before that in Open Meadow School, which is now part of PPS. But I'm here to really describe to you the level of stress that is in the school environments. I do believe that the president of our union did a good job describing it on OPB yesterday, if you have not heard that yet. But there's a dimension that I want to add, being a current teacher who is, is teaching right now in the schools, and like I said, just got home. So I decided today, although I wrote a piece, which I'm going to send to you, that I really just want to try to speak from my heart. The number-one thing that you can do right now is to recognize that the level of stress in the schools and the level of stress that students are experiencing is, is great, and there are deep supports that are needed. Psychiatric supports, mental health, everything down to the collapsing of supports for ELL students, all types of supports because of the depletion of the teaching staff, as well as, I'm, I was covered in sweat when I got home because it is a workout just to be there. And for me to say that alone is ableist because I'm able to do that kind of work right now. I'm talking about custodial work, and this is no disrespect to our amazing custodians, but we're short custodians. So I'm sweeping, I'm mopping, I'm cleaning up bodily fluids, I'm talking about blood, sweat, and tears. And everything that you see in the 82nd corridor, everything you see going on in this city, you need to understand it's reflected in our schools, and it's what our community and our schools are going through. In that dynamic, if you look at the organizational psychology of the dynamic, you have administrators who are stressed out, teachers who are stressed out, huge burdens on those of us who are still there. And in that dynamic, I think administrators, from my observation, many are feeling a sense of needing to document the blame. Where do we place the blame when there's violence in classrooms, when there's outbursts, when there's all types of services needed that are not there? I'm seeing and hearing, and this is from having friends all across the city who are teachers who are working schools, I'm hearing of a dynamic and witnessing it where, in some cases, evaluations are being used almost as a tool to document teacher blame, okay? That is what I'm seeing and hearing. That is so far from a professional development philosophy. I'm, I'm hurt when I see the eyes of, puffy eyes of younger teachers than myself with no support, who came into the profession with a desire to really do a great job, and then having the stress break them down, and then even having the feeling that their administrators are not supporting them. I'm not saying this about anyone specific necessarily, I'm talking about a cultural dynamic, an us-against-them thing that is originating from the pressure we are under, but is still not acceptable, nor is it the path we want to go down.
You may not have been able to hear that the timer did go off, the three-minute timer, so if you could just finish your last thought.
Secondly, in this time, you have decisions to make, do not break up school communities. Doing so will harm the communities that you say you want to serve, okay? Black, Indigenous...
Suzie.
People of color, I hear you, Mr. Scott, you're going to have to cut me off because I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure to make this statement for the people that I'm here to represent.
Thank you for your testimony, really appreciate it.
Right now, you'll hurt people.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
You have Xander Levine.
Good evening, Directors. Students are scared about getting COVID in school. Students want a vaccine mandate, and they want it now. If students don't get vaccinated, allow them to get tested as an exemption. Don't believe me about the opinions of students, go see for yourself. Go into schools, listen to the members of the district student council, who all support the mandate and pass a resolution in favor of it. Listen to the data that the student rep will present later tonight that shows what students think. Multiple of you have already clearly stated you support a mandate, and now that cases are dropping, you don't support it? But cases are not dropping, and it's becoming clear that this virus is going nowhere. The data presented by staff does not show the full picture. The data staff presented shows case rates from all of Oregon. But PPS students don't come from the whole state, they come from Molnoma County, so it's critical you look at data from just this county. Case rates as of yesterday are as high as they were at the start of this, this school year. Yesterday, according to U.S. Health and Human Services, Molnoma County had 302 positive cases. When school started, September 1st, Molnoma County had 260 cases. Speaking of those 302 cases yesterday, two of which were students from my school. I just learned that they had COVID yesterday. Cases have not dramatically dropped. Cases are at an all-time high. Look at the data for yourself. Delaying this vote or a mandate by six months would mean nothing but backing away from your commitment to center students in your decision-making. Six months is an arbitrary number. You really want to wait till the end of May to start talking about this again? You want to delay this through cold and flu season and leave it up for discussion at the end of the school year? I didn't realize that it was standard practice to delay important decisions, but maybe I, I need to learn something new. That's six months that students have to sit in school, wondering if classmates are vaccinated and if they will contract this deadly virus. Bringing this up for debate again in mid-May with less than a month to school will accomplish nothing. In my opinion, it's simply a foolish idea, and the damage will already have been done by then. You need to act now. You can't be scared of acting. I don't need to sit here and tell you your own rules. You don't have to listen to the recommendation of staff to delay this vote. Instead, bring a vote to the floor tonight and vote on this. Vote yes on a vaccine mandate and show students that you really care about our safety. Thank you.
Thanks, Xander. Nice to see you again. Kara, who's next?
Yes, we have Charlie Neiman.
Welcome, Charlie, can you hear us?
I can hear you, I just unmuted myself.
Great.
How are you? You can hear me okay?
We can hear you fine, go ahead, thanks.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity, it's my first time at one of you guys' meetings, and I'm really impressed with what I'm hearing, especially with all the acknowledgements and whatnot. I just wanted to, I'll make this brief, but I wanted to talk about Commissioner Dan Ryan's proposal to put a safe resting village or homeless camp on Portland Public School property off of Northeast 42nd and Killingsworth, on the former Whittaker, Whittaker Middle School property. I'm a, I'm a neighbor, I live in Coley, I'm raising my three-year-old son with my wife, I work in construction, she's a student, we're working our tail off to provide a, a safe place for our son to live. And my, myself and other neighbors are fully against this proposal that Commissioner Ryan and other people are talking about. I personally support the safe resting villages, but I don't believe that they should be in the middle of a neighborhood next to a park. And since it sits on your guys' property, that's why I'm here and talking to you, as far as I understand it. So I really hope that you guys will hear the voices of the neighborhood and not go through with this proposal and whatnot, and for a long list of reasons, but mainly because it's just not safe. It's already, as many of you guys know, I'm sure many of you live in the Portland area, there's garbage everywhere, it's, you know, there's all these issues going on in town, and we really don't need a, another homeless camp in this, in our neighborhood. So, and that's not to say I don't think that, you know, our, you know, our homeless neighbors don't deserve a dignified place to live, it's just that, it's just not a good idea, it's not right to our children, it's not right to the parks, it's not right to the neighbors, so that's all I had to say, and I hope that you guys will hear, hear the voices of my fellow neighbors here in Coley and Concordia and everybody else around here that feels strongly about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Thomas Bussay.
Thank you, hello, my name is Thomas Bussay, Boy Umbrella Sam Sam Edward, I'm a resident of your district, and forgive me if my comments are a bit angry. The Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System currently lists over 18,000 deaths attributed to Corona shots. Included in this number is my niece. She was murdered last month by the U.S. Navy with a mandated Pfizer gene therapy fraudulently marketed as a vaccine. She was 19, in perfect health, a basketball player, sorry, and no risk for respiratory illness. Pfizer is conveniently shielded from liability, and I was disheartened to learn on November 2nd, through the British Medical Journal, that a whistleblower had come forward showing Pfizer had falsified data, unblinded its clinical trial, and covered up reports of serious adverse events. Worse, the FDA knew, but approved the so-called vaccine anyway. The evil doctors of death and racketeers and the pharmaceutical medical mafia who murdered my family did not even have the decency to wait for approval of a Novavax product, which might have a better safety profile. Maybe we should wait. They're told to follow the science. Based on the currently published data, you would have to murder 2,624 children to save 31. The math is hard, so let's go vaccine the topic, not that the crooks and cronies care. Why not follow the science? In May 2020, an official government report from the German Interior Ministry read, "A blue-ribbon panel of Europe's top scientists assessed the Corona threat and determined it was a global false alarm. A simple cold virus, no different than 100 already in circulation." What was it Willa Cathar said? Give them a new name and they'll think they have a new fact. We need to dissolve illusions about the nature of our media. We have a propaganda corporate media ultimately controlled by military intelligence. What is their agenda? When I was born, it was official policy of this board and this district to refer disabled, low-performing, and suspected homosexuals for evaluation by the Oregon State Eugenics Board. The policy was eagerly pushed by the prostitutes at the Oregonian pretending to be journalists. How many lives were ruined through electroshock, lobotomy, sterilization, and chemical castration will never be known, because the records were conveniently shredded in 2002. Just as the Oregonian was lying us into war, they lied then, they are lying now. And how will you be viewed in 20 years for going along with a lie with blood on your hands, putting bodies into coffins?
Thank you for your testimony. Kara?
Thank you, yes, Todd Rice.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, hi, my name is Todd Rice, last name is spelled R-I-C-E. And while I'm not a native Oregonian, my family proudly chose, proudly chose to make Portland, Oregon, home to raise our two children and to open a new small business in downtown. We're very actively involved in community organizations that support you through athletics and other activities. You know, we've all gone through a lot over the course of the pandemic since early 2020, and in most cases, our kids have been losing and suffering the most. That being said, my public comment tonight is to raise awareness in a plea for change in course of operations at the PPS Civic Use of Buildings, otherwise known as CUB. Last month in October 2021, Cubs stopped issuing new permits for the use of PPS facilities by community organizations. This new rule that comes with no explanation prohibits any and all community organizations from renting PPS indoor or outdoor facilities, and further provides zero guidance for how long this prohibition will remain in place. Keep in mind, this comes on the heels of community organizations renting PPS facilities for most of this calendar 2021. for most of this calendar 2021 during the height of this Delta variant without significant issues. Now, as we're moving toward an endemic with OHSU telling us we're gonna reach the herd immunity by the end of this year, we're again restricting access for our children. This failure to issue new Cub permits will affect all community organizations that otherwise lack resources to pay for non-PPS facilities, and our kids are gonna suffer as a result. Further, I want to emphasize this Cub permitting prohibition will lead to a cancellation of all recreational youth sports this spring 2022, further widening the equity gap across all four quadrants of Portland. Recreational sports such as lacrosse and soccer in the spring are the only option for most of our children, given the affordability as compared to club sports, which may cost in the thousands to join. Recreational sports are often 100% subsidized at no cost for families in need. These expensive club sports will continue as they have the financial means to secure non-PPS facilities. So with, so without access to PPS facilities, recreational lacrosse, soccer, and other sports organizations are gonna go dormant. And once again, as in 2020, we will not be able to serve the youth seeking affordable sports. This Cub policy unfairly punishes those children who lack financial resources to pay for these high-cost competitive club sports. In conclusion, failure to address this Cub permitting prohibition right now in a matter of days and weeks, not months, will result in a shutdown of all volunteer, low-cost, inclusive youth soccer and lacrosse programs. Don't fail to act, and please don't fail our kids. Please reinstate Cub permitting. Please serve our kids by continuing to provide access to PPS facilities. So lacrosse, soccer, and all of our community support organizations can give our children the mental health and physical well-being they need in these times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marissa Bryman.
Hello, um, my name is Marissa Bryman, B-R-Y-M-A-N. I'm a parent of a Harrison Park 4th grader, and I've also been a representative for Harrison Park on the Southeast Guiding Coalition since last year. I would like to explain why I disagree with, um, the option of delaying the Southeast enrollment balancing work. Harrison Park is one of the most diverse schools in PPS and in the state, and enrollment balancing was intended to provide more equitable educational opportunity to students in schools, um, that have been under-enrolled for many years, including Lane Middle School. This work is so long overdue that it really can't be delayed any longer. The, the educational experts at PPS tell us that our kids will receive a superior education in a comprehensive middle school versus a K-8 school. And Harrison Park is currently the only remaining K-8 non-focus option school in all of Southeast, and we've been waiting patiently for our turn. The fact is that by opening Kellogg last year, um, I'm sorry, this year, the decision has already been made to move forward with providing all students in Southeast with access to a middle school with optimal enrollment. And I'd like to remind the board that last winter, the Creston community felt so strongly that their kids could not wait one more year to get into a middle school. At the board made the last-minute decision to have Creston convert, um, right away to a middle, to an elementary and then feed to Kellogg. So please remember that these decisions last year were also made during the pandemic. And telling Harrison Park that we need to wait even longer would be shockingly unjust. I want you to know that I, I do share the concerns of many of my colleagues on the Southeast Guiding Coalition, that there hasn't been enough time allotted to working on a scenario that we can recommend to the board for opening Harrison Park Middle School and balancing enrollment. Um, it's frustrating to us that PPS was aware well in advance that many schools would need to be affected in order to adequately enroll Harrison Park and Lane. And surely, we knew that Phase 2 would be more complex and far-reaching than Phase 1. But there were fewer Southeast Guiding Coalition meetings scheduled for Phase 2, and the potential scenarios weren't presented until halfway through the process. Um, unfortunately, there's never going to be a scenario that everyone is happy with, and there's never going to be a convenient time to make big change. There's no question that we're going to end up with an imperfect scenario, but I'm asking you to remember that the purpose of this work was to center the needs of the kids in under-enrolled schools, and delaying the work does not serve these kids. So please let us complete this work as planned. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your testimony.
That concludes who we have for public comment.
Great, thank you, Kara. Okay, next up, um, Student Representative Weinberg. We want to move to the students' report, and I, I know you also, you have a student report and also a report on the, um, uh, vaccine survey that I think you did. And, and I think you've requested, we go ahead and talk about the vaccine survey as part of that discussion, so we'll do the first part of your student report now and the second part when we get there, if that works for you.
Yeah, so.
So I think we won't actually be doing this, we'll, we'll do this later in the agenda, yeah.
Exactly. Okay. Good evening, everyone. On Tuesday, November 9th, the District Student Council, DSC, voted unanimously in favor of a district-wide vaccine mandate for all students 12 and up. This includes all students attending in-person school and all other district activities. The District Student Council also supports strongly-held religious and medical exemptions from the vaccine requirement. We strongly encourage the Portland Public School Board to do the same. Mandate all students get vaccinated against COVID-19. Our goal is to ensure students in PPS have a full five days of in-person school. If our goal is to keep students in school for as much as possible, vaccinating kids is a way to reduce the quarantine burden on students' learning and families, on students' learning and also families. It also reduces the spread of infection, which keeps kids in school longer. The District Student Council's mission is to elevate student voices. We believe adding methods of safety such as the vaccine mandate will keep our students and the greater Portland metro community safe. The District Student Council also asked me to share that after the staff report presented in preparation for tonight's discussion, we ended up discussing at length whether, we ended up discussing at length whether to issue a response to that report, but there wasn't consensus on a response, so there will be no statement on that topic. Secondly, the DSC's Grand High School rep, Danny Cage, sat down with a couple of students and parents, I believe, two weeks ago, to talk about issues affecting middle school students at Roseway Heights after students had held a student-led walkout to address ongoing student sexual harassment at their school, which resulted in physical altercations between students. Some of the highlighted issues raised were, first, ongoing sexual harassment among peers mostly directly at girls from male students. Secondly, students felt admin aren't doing enough for students around harassment and were constantly being dismissed. Third, several students of color have said that they have met with, they have been met with racist behavior and targeted racist language, and has resulted in physical altercation between peers in the past. Fourth, student safety was highlighted by both students and parents, some describing the environment in their school as unsafe. And finally, many students said that they feel staff are overwhelmed and cannot handle fights between students currently. I was able to visit Roseway Heights last week and witness how overwhelmed staff are. I heard a teacher ask if there were any training on how to stop fights that were already occurring, and the response I heard was that the district's training right now focused on prevention strategies and not intervention strategies to implement at the moment to stop a fight. Lastly, I was disheartened to hear over this weekend that the Newburgh School Board voted to fire their superintendent without cause. This comes after the school board voted to ban LGBTQ2SIA+ and BLM flags in schools. I wanted to commend Directors Brandy Penner, Rebecca Pirros, Inez Peña, for standing up for students. The amount of fear I have heard from LGBTQ+ and Black students from Newburgh School District breaks my heart. I've also heard from students in PPS and other surrounding districts about how easy it seems for districts to backtrack on their commitment to supporting Black and LGBTQ+ students. I'm honored to be a part of a district that holds this commitment to Black, Native, and LGBTQ+ students close. I'm also honored to serve on the State Board of Education as student advisor, where we too hold our commitment to Black, Native, and LGBTQ+ students close. My heart goes out to the students in Newburgh School District and any other district where students' identities are not being valued and celebrated. I hope we can all do better to support and value all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Representative Weinberg. Okay, we're gonna move on to Board Committee and Conference Reports, and we'll just sort of quickly go through these, no need to give a report if you don't have one, but we'll start off with Audit Committee Director Konstant.
No report.
Great, Charter and Alternative Programs, Director Green.
Uh, no report at this time.
Intergovernmental Committee, I know you've got a meeting coming up tomorrow.
We've actually, we only had one item on the addendage, so we decided it was the best use of staff and board time to cancel that meeting. So the intergovernmental meeting for tomorrow is canceled, and we will be meeting in December.
Breaking news from the dais, thank you. Policy Committee, Director Brim Edwards.
There's three small things we had recently had a committee meeting on 10.
Is your microphone on, Julius?
It's the first time people have had to point that out. So, uh, first of all, we welcomed, I want to thank, um, the student rep for appointing, um, committee members. Uh, we had a first meeting with our new student rep, Danny Cage, he's gonna be a great addition, brought some good questions and perspectives and insights. Second, we spent a fair amount of time walking through the superintendent and staff's feedback on the climate action policy draft, and also feedback on the changes by committee members. And then third, we also reviewed, discussed, and referred, um, some policies for a first reading that will come before the board tonight, shortly.
Great, thank you. Facilities Operations Committee, Director Hollins, I know you have a meeting tomorrow as well.
That has not been canceled.
Yeah, it has not been canceled yet. I'm joking, uh, yes, we have, we have no report. And we do have a Facilities Operation, um, meeting tomorrow. And if, Director, Director Scott, can I talk about the conference now? Do you want me to wait till after everyone's done reporting?
Um, yeah, go ahead, give your update now, that'd be great.
Okay. So I had the pleasure of going to NASP conference, which is the National Association School Black Educators. And it was absolutely awesome. We started out the day, um, with the opener from Dr. George McKenna III. He was a dynamic speaker, a board member. And he just talked about everything that a board should be doing, could be doing, and have not done. Um, and it just was just inspirational, motivating. Um, and that was really the first thing, um, on the second, I mean, on the 12th. And that's how the whole conference was from beginning to end. We had a lot of different breakout sessions that I attended, from how to speak to Black boys, uh, how to educate Black boys, talking about access to literacy, um, and really prioritizing that. Gave great examples as far as access to literacy enables us to participate in a democratic process. Then we went to the School Wellness Wheel, where they talked about the emotional, uh, mental, um, health of our students. And then we went to a couple of other things, um, the last one was a Men of Iron Sessions, which was a group of, um, superintendents from around the country. Awesome group of folks, um, and it was talking about, like, the needs of superintendents and the support that superintendents, um, look for as well. And that was eye-opening and, um, really inspirational, so. Besides that, I mean, there was so much other stuff that happened, and breakout sessions, ideas, what other school districts are doing. We had a, uh, speaker, um, by the name of Dr. Francisco Duran. Um, I believe he's from the Association of Latino Administration and Superintendents. And the unity that he spoke about, um, as far as Latino and African-Americans was just phenomenal. And so, that's just kind of the, the process, I mean, the, the conference in a nutshell, but it was just so much more of that. We had a great representation from, um, PPS. We had Dr. O was there, Dr. Proctor was there, uh, Kevin Payton is the principal at, um, Tutman. And it was just a great time to get together, talk, and experience something that, for me, was my first time, and will not be the last. So that's my report from NASP conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hollins, yeah. And just, uh, to make sure that all the board knows, at your Facility and Operations Committee meeting tomorrow, there's a few things on the agenda, but one of those is that the city will be talking about their proposed, um, use of the Whittaker Adams property site. So I would encourage board members either to attend if you can or watch the, the video afterwards.
Can I just ask a question about that? Director Hollins, is that, is it, there's three proposed uses, um, potentially for the Whittaker site? Is it just the city proposal that we're gonna be discussing tomorrow?
Correct.
Yeah, and I believe, because we, we talked about the, you know, sports and then, and then the long.
We've heard the other two already, so we're listening to, um, the city, uh, presentation tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Uh, next up, Elections Task Force, just, uh, to give an update for, for folks, because I know there's a lot of board interest in, in this, so we've been sort of holding off just because of reopening schools and all the other issues. We do have a meeting, um, set up, um, for, I think, the week after Thanksgiving to begin sort of just the conversation and timeline. I just want to let everyone know, we'll be reporting back very, very frequently on this process in terms of, you know, there's the issues of, of the redistricting, which, which by law we have to do. And then, and then also potential discretionary issues the board has in terms of, do we want to change the way, you know, people are elected and make other changes to the election process? So I know there's a lot of interest in this, and, um, we're just, again, we would have liked to start a little bit earlier, but given other things sort of held off, so we'll, we'll start that process and be coming back to the board and keeping you updated pretty regularly moving forward. Great. Uh, and then Southeast Guiding Coalition, we'll have a presentation on later on today, so. With that, I think next up on our agenda are some policy issues. And first reading of the cafeteria policy, Director Brim Edwards, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Vice Chair Scott, and I'll just say, Chair to Pass. I think it's a great idea to, um, for your, your sharing responsibilities and, um, doing things, so, um, thank you for modeling.
Turn the mic on.
I was just thanking Chair to Pass for, uh, her modeling distributed leadership, with the switch at the beginning of the meeting. So, uh, thank you, Vice Chair Scott. Tonight, we have, uh, before the board, a set of first readings, or in layperson's terms, I'm trying to, like, remove it from legislative terms, but in layperson's terms, essentially, we're having the introduction of a set of policies. And those could, policies could be introductions of new policies, revisions of existing policies, or recisions, which is also another word for removing something from our policy, our virtual policy manual. Uh, so the first policy revision we're considering for this evening is a revision of policy 5.10.090, the cafeteria plan. We're not considering it, I'm just reading, introducing it. Shortly before the last policy committee meeting, there was a request from staff to fast-track changes to this policy so the district, uh, could make, um, some amendments to the district's cafeteria plan before year-end due to the passage of federal legislation. When reviewing the policy, which is actually the cafeteria plan in itself, um, at 50-plus pages, working with the staff, um, we came up with a revised policy that was brought before the policy committee. Superintendent Garrow and HR Chief Reese reviewed and supported the language, and the committee members and student rep unanimously recommended a first reading. The policy essentially removes, removes the actual detailed plan language from the policy, so it, um, strikes 52 pages. I want to get credit for that, Vice Chair Scott. And it says that, and the substitute language really is just substance. There's a sort of introductory paragraph, and then there's a second paragraph that just says that legally required compliance changes to the district cafeteria plan be publicly posted 10 days before the plan changes are made, and the financial implications will be shared with and may be reviewed by the board. Uh, and then that changes to the cafeteria plan that are, represent new material benefits, uh, will be approved by the board. The second revision, um, that the policy committee recommended is to policy 5.60.010, Administrative Employee Terms of Employment. As board members may recall, the board passed a resolution on September 28th that suspended, uh, two specific portions of this policy relating to the appointment and assignment of non-represented employees. This revision deletes the two suspended, um, sections that we, um, had suspended in that resolution relating to appointments, and replaced it with language, um, that clarifies that the superintendent has the authority to. has the authority to appoint, assign, or alter the assignment of non-representative employees, with the exception, of course, of the two auditors that report to the board. This revised language was developed in collaboration with the staff, agreed to by the superintendent, and recommended unanimously by the committee members and the student rep for a first reading or introduction this evening. And then, the last two policies up for a first reading are a continuation of our work to prune unnecessary or duplicative policies from our virtual policy manuals, so that we really have our policy manuals like the heart of our values and most important policies. So, policy 3.20.011 relating to planning time and policy 5.20.080 relating to the evaluation of teachers are both being recommended by the committee to the board for an introduction tonight and for rescission. These, the reasons for the rescissions are that the planning days are negotiated with our labor partners and part of the school calendars. And then, the evaluation of teachers, we don't need a policy because it's governed by the Portland Association of Teachers Collective bargaining agreement. So, those are the two rescissions and then the two revised policies that the committee recommended for first reading. All of those policies proposed for revision or rescission are posted on the board website, and the public comment period is a minimum of 21 days. Contact information from public comment will be posted with the draft policy changes. And it's a standing agenda item at the policy committee to review any sort of public comment or proposed revisions. Two items are out for public comment, and we have a policy committee in early December. And the board is expected, assuming there's not major changes, to have a second reading of the policies at its December board meeting. And I think I would just add, if I see Chief Reese in the room, that you don't need to come up, but I was just going to say that we really need to move ahead with that adoption so that we can make the plan changes before year-end. But I guess if people have questions about it, they could ask her. But that's something that needs to be done by December 31st, and the way the policy is written, it would allow the staff to make the changes and also remove the plan permanently from our policies.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Brim Edwards. Is it worth noting in a school board context that the cafeteria plan has nothing to do with school lunches?
Oh, yeah.
Is that an important distinction?
You know, I thought about that, because I was reading through it, and it was relating back to the Tax Reform Act of 1986, which is something I'd worked on, and then it was like, okay, how to explain this. So, I do think, now that you raised it, it really, thank you, Director Scott, I was so caught up in explaining what a first reading was, that to the most obvious thing. A cafeteria plan is a menu of benefits that's tied to the tax code and relates to the sort of before and after-tax provisions. And it's called a cafeteria plan because, in theory, employees choose from a series of benefits, and so it's like being at a cafeteria, choosing, choosing benefits. But it's not actually a cafeteria plan.
Great.
We need a whole meeting for that topic.
I know, right, exactly. Okay, thank you very much for those updates. Is there any board comment or discussion about either the first readings or either the policy changes or the rescissions? Going once. Okay, and then just, and Director Brim Edwards, thank you for clarifying a little bit. So, we're going to be taking public comment, and then any board member, you know, if you dive into this a little bit deeper, you can bring that to the policy committee coming forward.
Yeah, we have a standing agenda item that just, you know, it gives us an opportunity so the committee that worked on it, if something comes in, to have an opportunity to talk about it, and also, we have usually the relevant staff there. So, I can't remember the date of our next policy committee member, I think it's the first week of December.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, for the next agenda item, the future of Harriet Tubman Middle School, I would also like to pass this back to Director Brim Edwards, who served as our board liaison to the Rose Quarter Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Vice Chair Scott. So, as this board knows, we passed a, we passed several resolutions relating to Harriet Tubman and the state project that has been proposed relating to I-5 at the Rose Quarter, which would have a very significant potential negative impact on the school. And the board has weighed in in terms of asking for environmental impact statement, but we've also passed a resolution that calls on the state to, if they move ahead with the project, to pay for the moving and the rebuild of Harriet Tubman. And so, I appreciate the board doing, passing that because that sent a very strong statement to the governor and our partners that we've been at the table with, talking to about this project. And the governor held a series of meetings, there's been a whole series of community meetings with lots of stakeholders involved. All of the, the outcome of all of those in relation to Harriet Tubman was, there was an agreement that when the original I-5 project happened, it had a very negative impact on the school and that the most recent, the recently proposed project would like, would as well. And so, in those conversations, we talked to the governor about this being a state responsibility since the state, since I-5 really is a major transportation corridor for goods movement, for, you know, agricultural products coming from the east. So, it's not just a Portland road, this is a statewide road of significance and transportation corridor. And because of that, that the state had an obligation. So, we've been in conversations with the governor and legislators with Courtney Westling, the PPS's Government Affairs Lead, has arranged a series of meetings with legislative representatives and also that have been joined by Lindsey Capps in the governor's office. And we've had a very positive response to the recommendation that the state step up and pay for something that is of statewide importance. And I think I've mentioned before that, that the, it's not going to be easy coming up with $100 to $125 million, which is sort of the projected cost. But it turns out that while that's a big task, maybe the bigger one is going to be finding a location that fits our criteria. And essentially, over the last six weeks, the reaction from most of the people we've talked to that would have a significant say in this is that without a site, they can't appropriate the funding. They're not going to just hand us $100 and $125 million and say, you know, go build a school somewhere. They want to know specifically what we're going to be doing. So, there has been a project team that has been working on the site selection, and I think this is the point which I ask Dan Young. His team has been very hard at work over the last, I don't know, six months, looking for a site. And so, this is a critical second piece, and we want to make sure that the board and the community not only have a sense of where we are on the potential funding, but also on a location, because, you know, clearly, it will have a big impact on the Harriet Tubman school community, and so we want to be thoughtful and have set up criteria. And with that, do you want to proceed with discussion?
Directors and Superintendent and Student Representative Weinberg. Just quick recap, what Director Brim Edwards just noticed, noted that we, quite a long time ago, expressed concern about I-5 moving closer to Harriet Tubman Middle School and the idea of relocating that school, and ultimately, they agreed with that. And after those conversations, we started looking at potential relocation options for Harriet Tubman. So, I just want to give a real quick, high-level summary of what that site review process looks like, and then highlight our current status and next steps. So, our site analysis process can really be summarized in kind of three general steps. Step one, which is a high-level vetting, looking at really every property that is in the potential area. Step two, which would be an internal feasibility analysis on a limited number of sites, where we would look at land use, site layout and massing, circulation, neighborhood compatibility, and some other aspects as that. And then, step three, which is really a detailed suitability analysis, where we bring in third-party consultants as well, we do environmental analysis, traffic studies, site plans, we engage the community in more depth, and then we also start negotiating with the property owner. So, that's kind of the three-step process that we're trying to go through. For our step one, kind of high-level look at the entire area, we used some pretty simple criteria to help identify potential properties. We were looking for properties that are within the Tubman catchment area, or at least very close. We want generally six to nine acres if possible. We did look at sites that were significantly smaller than that, but we usually want somewhere about six to nine acres for a middle school. Amenable zoning designation, and then the ability to develop the property relatively soon, you know, within the next one to two years. So, we took a look at the entire catchment area and wanted to be fined, well, to probably no surprise to many people here, there is no greenfield 10-acre site in Albina that is for sale and ready for development. In fact, Albina is, is pretty well-developed and is pretty urban. So, the search honestly produced really very few viable options. And we certainly, as we started to look at the criteria and the number of sites, you know, we knew that we're going to have, you know, start considering trade-offs. And so, we really tried to maximize as many sites as we could. But there's really just not a lot of options that are out there right now. But we are looking at one site in earnest at the moment. In part, because of the limited purchase options, we began to look at the option of utilizing existing PPS schools to house the Tubman students. And to be, to be just totally clear, this is very preliminary, there have been no decisions, there are no plans. This is just a concept that we have been discussing internally. We have just begun to engage stakeholders in the community of, is this a viable option? We want to explore it, if it is ultimately the best option for Tubman, for the neighborhood, and for the entire district. So, at a very high level, that is where we are at the moment. And so, I'll pause there and take questions, I imagine there might be some.
I just, I don't think you saw Director Green's reaction when you were talking about finding land in Albina, because he literally had his head in his hands.
I did not.
So, thank you for your work there.
I'm just curious as to whose idea was it to look for land in the Albina district? Because you should have knew from the gate that was a no.
I think, though, the latter part of the conversation is a pretty interesting one, because we do know that we have declining elementary and middle school enrollment, and we're already actively in discussion around potential school consolidation in southeast. So, we know that there are ideas that we could entertain around in the Tubman catchment about possibly repurposing some of our properties there and having some consolidation at the elementary school level. I mean, that's never an easy conversation, but, you know, it's good that we've already done somewhat of a deep dive on our enrollment figures of till 2034, or whatever it is that we were just looking at, so.
Yeah, we do have some enrollment data, and really, we're just in that process of information gathering and engaging to see, to see what the feasibility opportunity is.
So, I want to comment on the availability of land in Albina. It's true, there's nothing, we get people looks, driving up and down the streets just looking for things. I would just want to make sure that we, you know, equally share the burdens and the benefits of a move and whose, whose kids are being moved. And I had another comment, but I can't remember at the point, at the, at the time. I'll come back to it.
I do want to maybe just touch on Director Lowry's and observation about Director Green. Because one of the things that the governor did in this process, not only has she been working and her staff on, working to come up with the capital stock, but also asked all the jurisdictions in, that have land in that catchment area, whether they had any, that might fit the criteria. And not only is the space really, was really eliminating the acreage, but, you know, I-5, there are a lot of properties near I-5 that people suggested that just were no-gos, because actually, we wouldn't be getting a better health and a better environment for our students. But I will say, I really appreciate all the other jurisdictions looking to see if they had one, and we do have one that we're doing more due diligence on that was a city site. The other thing, I guess I want to just emphasize, just elevate so that the board has this sort of, sort of front and center, is there is urgency about this, because, as Director Scott would know, as you head into the February legislative session, you have to get your budget documents in. And it's not going to be the week before the February session, we submit our request for $125 million, but we really have, there's a whole process before the session starts where you have to submit a lot of documents about the actual financial request. And, of course, there's a lot of competing interests, and so, those that are complete and ready to move are the ones that, you know, get considered first. So, there is a sense of urgency, we've been asked to have our sort of proposal in by December 1st, because that will increase the likelihood of our success.
And I actually had a timeline question, which you just mostly answered. And so, I guess, I guess sort of, given that timeline, I mean, and I think this is really important, are we confident that we can get a proposal in by that time, that at least, I mean, it sounds like we've got maybe some options? And I'm also thinking about the whole community outreach, which is obviously going to have to happen, you know, in the interim period between then and the special session.
I don't know if Chief Garcia wants to speak to this, but this, this process all along has been a facilities, a community engagement, a legal process.
Sorry, I keep forgetting. But it's been a process where we've incorporated everyone, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I can, I can give a little bit of details in terms of what we anticipate as some next steps. So, on Friday, we did communicate with the school communities that would, you know, would be impacted, so the community, the schools in the Tubman catchment area, that this conversation is happening. So, many families are probably tuning in this evening just to hear this discussion. Secondly, what we are going to be sharing with the community is a series of engagement sessions where we want to hear directly from, from families at each of those schools. And we plan to do that the week of December 6. And so, 6, 7, 8, 9, I believe, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but again, we'll have more details. And the idea is to set some time to visit each school community, share a little bit more details of what is being discussed, and, and really hear feedback that we can share back with, with our broader community. So, again, we'll have more details to, to share with you, obviously, because you definitely want to hear what our communities, our families, our students want to have to say about the topic.
I just remembered, my follow-on thought was, so, talking about like, there is no land available in Albina, but there's publicly owned spaces, but just that I thought I saw in our long-range plan that the population projections out, I think it's 25 years, show, show growth in the Jefferson cluster and a loss in other, other clusters. And so, we know to expect more population, even if it isn't there today. And then, my comment about showing the benefits and the burdens is that this community in Albina has been heavily burdened, like, my entire life. And so, just if we could, you know, take care and concern in who we're moving and, you know, clearly articulate the benefits of any given moves to the community that's still, like, hanging on here, I would, I would really appreciate that.
You know, Director DePass, that's exactly why in the discussions that we're not discussing, like, it's a consolidation, because that's not the purpose. The purpose is, is to provide a high-quality equitable middle grades experience in a healthy environment for the students in the Tubman catchment area. And so, the, the goal would, if there was a current PPS property used, not it to be, like, we're going to move everybody around and there's no improvement, it, like, that the standard of what we're going to do has to be that it's an improvement.
And so, it sounds like we're headed towards a parallel process of working with our state legislators and allies in terms of that while doing the community outreach and gathering input and so forth. And the other thing, I guess maybe the last thing I would note is, this is just another example, and this is something that, given the timing in the session, we really do need to move forward, but it's yet another project, which is going to suck up significant amounts of staff time and district time and board time as well. So, just as we're continuing to think about what we can move forward this year and what we can't, I just think this is important to keep this project in mind as well, but I'm excited to hear that there might be movement down in Salem.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the conversations have been promising, but really, no site, no funds. I think we should just be clear. So, not to put any pressure on.
Okay. Any final comments or thoughts on this items? All right. Next up, and I think if.
I just wanted to thank staff for doing this groundwork from the first time we talked about it, and really said, you know, we need to get out of the theoretical and into the practical here, several months ago. So thanks for that legwork to your team, Dan.
So I was thinking we would go ahead, we'll go ahead and go into the vaccine, vaccine discussion of a, of a possible vaccination requirement, and then we'll take a break before the Southeast Guiding Coalition, if the board's okay with that. Superintendent Guerrero, would you please introduce this next item?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Chair Scott. So as I think directors know, we've tried to be as prudent as possible during this pandemic, to implement and adopt every possible health and safety measure. As you know, PPS was the first K-12 school district in the state to announce vaccine requirements for all of its staff. As school districts have begun to think about the role of vaccines, being encouraged or required to help keep students, staff, and school communities safe, I know that this board, along with senior staff, also expressed an interest in publicly getting into a dialogue and a discussion about the merits of a possible vaccine requirement for Portland students. And just to recap, we began this discussion with the board on September 28th. That evening, we heard from public health experts, from pediatric doctors, on the precedent and consequences of a potential requirement for COVID-19 vaccinations for students to attend school. So grateful for the continued careful dialogue that directors have been participating in on this very important and complex topic. As you know, we've heard from a whole spectrum and variability of perspectives on this topic. And I'd like to ask our Chief of Staff, Jonathan Garcia, to share the latest update on what we're hearing from our community members, as well as some updated thinking by staff at this time. Jonathan?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, directors. So what I'd like to do today is go over the, the data or the information that I shared with you, before I turn it over to you for your discussion. So when the PPS Board began your discussion on September 28th, our community was at its highest peak of COVID-19, and hospitality, hospital capacity was at record lows. So here in Monoma County, for example, the week of September 26th, there were 60 cases of folks in hospitals. Last week, the week of the 7th, there was 34. According to Monoma County, the week of the 23rd, or sorry, the week of the 26th, there was 1,123 cases, compared to last week, 880. As a learning organization, we continue to review the latest research and information on COVID, with our independent public and pediatric health experts, and on our health advisory panel, as well as local public health authorities, so that our decisions reflect new knowledge, conditions, and insights. At the last, at the last time, the last time we had a conversation, the school board narrowed the discussion to two possible options, either requiring a COVID vaccine for, for students ages 12 and up, or not pursuing a requirement at this time. There was a question, or a request from directors around models of forecasting, which we've shared here. So today, more than three in four students ages 12 to 17 here in the county are now vaccinated, with younger children now beginning to get vaccinated. For specifically, according to OHA, 78.7% of individuals 12 to 17 have been, have initiated vaccine, COVID-19 vaccination, and have released, have received at least one dose, which is 652 short of 80% of the entire population of students ages 12 to 17 in our county. As I shared, our young children are beginning to get their first vaccine. And in fact, here in the county, one in five children in the county have already begun the series of doses in less than two weeks. Again, one in five, about a little bit under 19%. Public experts estimate that herd immunity requires about 80 to 90% of the population to have COVID-19 immunity. As of today, in Monoma County, more than 80% of people ages 18 and over have received at least one dose, that's about 82%. Overall, total population in Monoma County, we're at about 79.3, have at least received one dose, and 71.7% are fully vaccinated. We also shared with you information from Dr. Peter Graven. As many of you know, Dr. Peter Graven, who works at OHSU, sits on our PPS Health Advisory Panel, who recently shared an updated forecast of cases here in Oregon, which note a flatter period before further decline. In addition, there was a request from directors around current immunization rates. And so we provided you with the 2020, 2021 PPS vaccination, vaccination rates. And according to this data, about 1,005 of the 45,000 students at PPS, or about 2.2% of our student bodies submitted a non-medical exemption for all required vaccines. And only 43 students at PPS received a medical exemption for a required vaccination. To give you an indication of what that looks like, and we shared the data by, broken down by school, there are, at Riggler, one of our CSI, one of our school, CSI schools, only five students had, have a non-medical exemption of any one vaccine. At Scott, you're looking at 10 students. At Rosa Parks and at King, 11 students. On the higher end, you're looking at 144 students at Franklin, or 107 at Grant, or 104 at Kelly, to give you kind of a, a sense of, of the data that's there, since that was a question that was asked. Directors also asked questions about strategies to bring families along, as, to educate folks around COVID, COVID-19. And so, you know, we are, as a school district, leading with action. We are creating access and learning opportunities for, for vaccine for our students in our community. As you all know, we are, we've launched a series of COVID-19 vaccine clinics for students 5 to 11. We've held three to this date, actually, one is happening today, with two previously. At Fabian, we had 145 children get vaccinated, with 45 of their parents getting boosters. Last night, at Scott, we had a little bit over 100 students get vaccinated there as well. And I'm excited to hear about the numbers today. We're also working with other schools to launch site-specific clinics beyond the ones that we've announced. And again, we are just eager to, to, to support our families in getting that access to the vaccine. In addition, our teaching and learning led by Dr. Cheryl Proctor, has assembled K-5 lessons and resources, which I provided a snippet of, of some of those resources, that we're, we're sharing with educators and, and the broader community to, so they can learn about, so we can collectively learn about vaccinations. And so as, as folks have heard at this point, staff is recommending, as a result of all of this, what we just shared, for the board to, to, to pause for at least in the six months. So we can really see, our community has shown up. Our community has, has really stepped up in, in amazing ways. Again, look at the data, look at the folks running to get vaccines, you look at the data, and it's, and I think it's an indication that our, our community really is taking care of themselves and each other. Of course, this conversation, this decision is up, entirely up to the school board, and, and I'm looking forward to the discussion. If the board decides to proceed with, with a, an implementation, or with a required, requirement of a COVID-19 vaccination, then staff would recommend, on the implementation side, that you implement a non-medical exemption process that is consistent with the Oregon Health Authority's guidelines that are applied with other immunizations. So, so let me give you a little sense of what the current implementation for requiring vaccination. So in policy, we exclude students, right? So we say that if you don't have these certain vaccines, you are excluded from school. In practice, of course, we work with families to make informed decisions, which might mean getting vaccinated, or also might be submitting for a non-medical exemption, right? So we, as staff, work very carefully with our families to make sure that they know, you know, the steps that they need to take, informed decisions around those vaccine, immunization requirements. And so we recommend that if the board does proceed with a COVID-19 vaccine requirement, that you implement the same, that same process that is consistent with the Oregon Health Authority, for a number of reasons. One, it provides clarity and consistency to our broader community, to our families. And again, and I'll end with this, and I just said this earlier, but our community health is, is really driving the Portland community. And, and that, that there's power to be said. There's a, there's power in that statement, right? That our community has, is really caring for themselves and for each other. So with that, directors, I look forward to the conversation and discussion.
Great. Thanks, Chief Garcia. If the board's okay now, I'd like to turn to Student Representative Weinberg. And I think you have a presentation for us on the student survey.
Good evening. Perfect. So as I emailed to all of you earlier, I, the survey only closed Friday, so by no means is the analysis of the results complete. I'm looking at this as more of a first jab at hopefully what the board was looking for. Jab, yes, thank you.
Unintended.
And hopefully, I'll get a little bit more, if you want more information on certain disaggregated data, I can hopefully get that to you as soon as possible. So first off, for the method of how we distributed the survey, mostly three things. So the DSC worked inside their individual schools to distribute the survey. The DSC also contacted affinity clubs at their individual schools, to ask them to take the survey as well. The survey was also sent out to all high school and middle school administrators through the admin portal. And some high school and middle school administrators decided to post that on Canvas, Trivory for high schools. And also, some sent out emails to families or individual students as well. So let's look at the survey questions. So kind of off the top, you can read it, but basically, it's saying that the DSC would like to collect information on how students 12 and up feel about a vaccine mandate, and that this survey is completely anonymous. So we collected no emails, names, or necessarily age. I mean, a little bit, because we gathered grade level, but not necessarily. So there was no way to tie individual results to students. Also, if they didn't feel comfortable responding to any single question, they were not required to. So no question was required either. So the first two questions were, do you attend middle school or high school? Oh, I forgot. I should also mention that this survey was closed to only student, to only emails that ended in @pps.net, or @student.pps.net. So we only had respondents from students, and potentially teachers if they so chose, but hopefully did not.
[laughter]
The first question, do you attend middle school or high school, was aimed at kind of catching maybe some people who decided to take it, who weren't students. So we had about 18 students, 18 respondents, responded as neither. So we removed that data, as we're not interested currently in data from those who aren't middle school and high school students. Also, we have a question, what feeder school do you attend? As in, what high school are you attending, or will attend? We also asked, what identities do you identify as? So we had these options, and also an other box, which was well utilized by students. This was also multiple, multiple choice questions. So students were allowed to pick one, two, three, five, as many as they wanted, which did lead to, lead to some trouble in analyzing data later, because it was very hard to disaggregate the data by individual race, when students responded with 45 plus different racial categories. Also, a question on there was, are you fully vaccinated? Yes, no, partially, prefer not to say. I didn't include the results in that, but it is 88, 89% fully vaccinated who responded. And the final question, do you support a vaccine mandate for all eligible students, on a elector scale one to five? And finally, an open response, where we got around 1,100 students providing free responses. Some full paragraphs, some looked like essays. So there was not enough time in my schedule to do that, but I did send it to you guys, if you want to spend that time. So who responded? By grade level, we had about 25% middle school respondents, 75% high school respondents. I feel like this is pretty good, especially since we don't have middle school district student council representatives. So obviously, high school would have more respondents. And what feeder school do you attend to? We added this question after about 300 responses. So unfortunately, about 16% of the respondents just didn't respond, because we did not have that question. Overall, we had super low response rates from Jefferson High School and Benson Polytechnic High School. All other high schools were pretty well represented. And just as a second graph, without the didn't respond, this is what it looks like. So from who we got responses from, Franklin and Grant had the highest response rate, which makes sense, as they are the largest high schools, and pretty even distribution across the other ones. Again, besides Roosevelt, or sorry, Benson and Jefferson High Schools. And by race, this was a bit hard to gather, but what this graph represents is, take Asian for example, students who responded with Asian, or partially Asian, made up 10%. So each section doesn't represent one student, but rather, the percentage of students who responded as that race, or at least partially that race. And what were the results? So overall, do you support a vaccine mandate for all eligible students 12 and up? 78% of students fully supported a vaccine mandate, with another 11% supporting. Overall, that makes up nearly 90% of students supporting a vaccine mandate for eligible students 12 and up, with 5, 7% of students not supporting it. By cluster, the data is pretty uniform, except for Jefferson High School, which was below the average of four, which could be because of low response rate, or that could be representative, I don't really know, because we did have, I think, less than 10 respondents from Jefferson High School. And I meant to add numbers to the top for labels, for individual, for the numbers, but roughly 4.5 was across the board. And by grade level, exactly the same, 4.54, for high school students and middle school students. And now by race. There are four slides. I did not want to group certain racial groups or responses, so it ended up being a lot of information. At the end, I tried to bring it all together into a way that the board can digest. So just be forewarned, it is a little overwhelming. So along the bottom is the, how students responded. So if a student only responded with Asian, then they would be, their data would be calculated in that. If a respondent selected Asian and Latino, they would be in the next column over. And you can see how that led to 45 columns of respondents.
There's not that much of a difference between the rates there.
There is not a huge difference, yes. For the respondents who were below 3.5 or three, all of the number of respondents was three or less.
Jackson, just to editorial, it would be helpful to note the number in each group, as you go across, just to show those differences, and whether it's a large group or a small group.
Yes, the N equals.
Yep. I tried to figure out how to add that to the graph, but with some having 200 plus, and some having one, it was hard to show that. I do have a pivot table, which I can share with all you guys with that, the average response rate, and also the standard deviation for each group as well. I don't know how long to spend on each one, so just let me know.
You know, who has this figured out really well is the census.
Yes.
The census knows how many boxes you can check under race. And I think in 2000 was the first time you could check multiple races.
Yes. So we're still learning how to obviously disaggregate the data, and I don't have training on how to do that. So this is. So, this is the best thing I could come up with.
It's, I mean, it's, the alternative would be to not give people the opportunity to reflect their various multi-identities, so.
Yes.
In my opinion, you erred on the right side.
Or to group certain respondents, which I honestly didn't feel comfortable with.
It looks great. It looks great, Jackson. I'm loving it thus far, and I love graphs and I love Excel, so you're doing amazing. Keep it up.
Okay. We have two more slides for disaggregation by race. And you guys also do have access to this tool for your own, too.
Great.
Okay.
Do you want to just add anything else anecdotally about your conversations with the DSC as we roll into discussion here?
Yeah, I'm going to do this and then do that. So, I tried to bring this all together in some quantitative way to share with you in an easy, digestible way. So, this has the N sizes and also the average response rate for, by race. So, again, this is not strictly only students who responded only as Asian, but including respondents who responded as with Asian or at least partially Asian. Same with white, mixed race, native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, Latino, Native American, and black or African American.
Did you say that it's the response rate, or is it the rate of acceptance on that Likert scale? Another?
It's the average response, so.
The average response on a scale of one to five?
Yes.
Okay, not the re, okay.
Yes.
Just so I understand this, are people showing up in two places? So, if someone said they were Asian and, and black, they would actually be in both columns?
Yep. So, there's double, triple, quadruple counting, depending on how many races you selected.
So, I have a question just overall. And this would be like, if I were looking for the cross tab, the cross tab I would be looking for like in, in a survey is, did you ask, did you look at like how people responded if they were vaccinated? Because I'm just wondering the correlation between if you were vaccinated and support for a mandate versus, like, to me, these numbers, I really appreciate it because I think it gives us, you know, insights. It's like, okay, the, the ones that don't support a vac, vaccine mandate are the, those are the ones who are vaccine hesitant or need more information. And, you know, that's the delta you look at, so I'm curious whether that was a data point you, you had.
Yes, I do. So, the average response rate for if the responder responded as no, as not being vaccinated, was three point five. If they responded as partially vaccinated, it was four point one. If they preferred not to say, it was two. And if it was yes, it was four point seven.
Great.
Interesting.
So, yeah, not exactly what I expected, but it was, they were all above three, which would be basically neutral except for those who preferred not to say.
Gotcha. Did you have some wrap-up thoughts?
I don't think so, no.
Great.
I loved the graph with the, the middle schoolers. It, to me, said, how many kids, how many students in high school got their younger siblings to fill the survey out? And what did they have to do to get that? What did they have to promise?
You don't want to know.
So, let's go ahead and open up now for broad discussion, either questions for Jackson or back to the sort of staff presentation and, and recommendation. Again, the, the recommendation on the table from staff is to delay the conversation for at least six months, and I think we just want to have a board discussion about people's level of comfort moving forward with that, or if there's a different direction that the board wants to go. With that, I'll open it up.
I'll go ahead and start. I just double-checked your statistic, and the number is lower than what you reported because I just refreshed it. It's five hundred and sixty-three Multnomah County residents between the ages of twelve and seventeen yet to be, yet to be vaccinated, to get to the eighty percent level. And the number is rising for five to eleven-year-olds. My question I had was about the six months, which seems arbitrary when the virus is, would we not say, let's be responsive to, responsive to the virus rather than like, you know, by the clock, we're looking at this? Those, that's just my question for now. Where was the six months coming from? Is that based on what we hear about the projection expectations, the models?
Yeah, that's a great question, Chair DePass. I would say that I think what we're looking at is the way that our community is showing up to get vaccinated. So, again, what we've seen is that three in four of our students twelve to seventeen are vaccinated, and the fact that in just thirteen days, you know, one in five of our children, five to eleven, are, are beginning the process of getting vaccinated. So, you know, I, I think our recommendation, our, our belief is that our community is showing up, and so, what we want to see is, you know, how many folks will get vaccinated. You know, one of the things that we heard from the director of Multnomah Public Health was that, you know, the, a requirement for a vaccination should be the last resort after, after public health agencies have really thought about, you know, have exhausted all, all type of engagement with, with the broader community. And so, I think, you know, I think the, the conversation, you know, could be revisited before the six months. I, you know, I think I also want to be clear that the state of Oregon, who usually is the entity that, or OHA specifically, that provides requirements around school immunizations, they are beginning a conversation at the state level around this. So, you know, there are parallel conversations happening at the statewide level, as I understand it, and so, we anticipate and will monitor those conversations closely as well.
Excellent. And I have one more question. I want to just share that I've, I've gotten an email for a vaccine event focused on serving five to eleven-year-old black, Afro-Caribbean, African, black immigrants and refugees, and other people, communities of color, happening at the Lloyd Center. That's through Multnomah County's REACH program. It started tonight and had a DJ and a kids' center and an activity pack. And then, on Thursday, the Timbers have a vaccine clinic through Gate F, I believe, and that sounds really cool, too. There's, I don't think any restrictions on who. Do we have dates and times for our own clinics?
We do. If you look at your memo, I included the dates in here with the, of the first eight schools, so that's on page four of your memo. I will also be sharing, I'll send an email reminder with, with those as well. Just, just to make a, a public note here that, you know, the, the primary focus of those clinics are to provide or make available these doses to the families, the students and families of those specific school communities. And, and so, while we're having public conversations about, you know, these upcoming vaccine clinics, you know, I would urge and, and ask that our broader community, you know, really respect the, the individual school communities who these vaccines are really looking to target. We know that, you know, the, the desire is strong, which again, is an indication of our community as the desire to protect themselves and each other from COVID-19. And so, we just ask, you know, for the broader patients as, as, you know, doses become available here in, in, in the, in the region.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that real-time bump you just saw, Chair DePass, on Multnomah County website was from Boise, Elliott, Humboldt. So, let's go. They just shut down about a half hour ago.
Director Lowry.
Yeah, so I, you know, was, last time when we discussed this, was very supportive of a vaccine mandate, and I think for me, it's all about, going back to what Dr. Vine said from Multnomah County, which is, what is our goal? And our goal is to keep kids in school. And I think, you know, with the philosophical and religious exemptions, we wouldn't, I don't think we'd see a huge bump in vaccines by creating the mandate, and it would create a lot of distress in our community without getting us the benefit of lowering the amount of time children were missing for quarantining and other things. So, I do think pausing is wise, given that sort of political moment that we're in with the exemptions that we have and our high vaccination rate numbers. And I volunteer at Grouse. I do lunch duty on Mondays and Fridays, which is like the best thing. The kids are awesome. And I was there yesterday, and so many kids got shots over the weekend, and they were all like, they still had their Band-Aids on, like, as a mark of honor from like Thursday, and they're all lifting up their sleeves and showing me, I got my vaccine. You know, the littles that were doing it were so excited, and I think we're seeing that, that those folks who are able to and, and want to get the vaccine are doing it. I was really fascinated when we were looking at the memo and the vaccine numbers that you brought forward, Chief Garcia, that Kelly is our school with our most number of exemptions. And I think many of us saw a great number of Russian-speaking families in our town halls. So, I think there's something there with our Russian families who have a history with some of the governments that those families were associated with, a mistrust, and, and something very fascinating there. And so, I think as we have further conversations with Kelly and that community about how we keep folks healthy and support those students in school, that's a really interesting place to look, and just a fascinating insight that I wasn't aware of until we had those vaccine town halls and had it, had a great number of Russian-speaking families as part of them. So, I'm at the point where I do think it's, I think it's in the best interest. I hear kids like Xander, I have a high school student, I know kids want to feel safe, especially in, in the schools, and yet, for me, what we would gain with the mandate is not significant enough to push it forward at this time. I was a little frustrated with the Oregonians editorial in some of the like rush to decision-making that they said four of us took, and I really think for me, and I know my colleagues, it's been a very thoughtful process with lots of intense listening, lots of very thoughtful thinking about what is our goal and how do we best achieve student safety? And, and to say that, you know, we're just rushing into this, it, it's, I think it dishonors the work that staff has done. I think it dishonors the work that my board colleagues have done, both in engaging very much with the materials that have been provided for us, but I know all of us have also been engaging. And if you would have told me that I would be reading MIT papers on different consonants and the rate of aerosol spread from those consonants being spoken with and without a mask, I did not sign up for that when I ran for school board, but now this is my life. So, you know, and I've read all the, I read the articles that people send me saying, this will change your mind, and I read them and try to be very aware and thoughtful about this. This is a big deal, and I think, I feel like every time we talk about this, someone says we're going to have blood on our hands for something that we do. But I think all of us are really invested in how do we protect children? How do we keep kids in an academic, robust, joyful academic experience as much as possible? And I really do think the staff recommendation to delay is the right one at this time.
Great. Thanks, Director Lowry. Directors Green or Hollins, want to add anything?
Yes, I, I'll go before, before Mr. Director Green.
Get your thoughts in now.
Don't let the two preachers go back to back.
Right, you gotta break it between there, you know, take an offering, something. I just, I want to agree with Director Lowry, you know, when, when you have a discussion on this magnitude, you know, a lot of decisions on either way, either side of it, and for me, with my colleagues, that at the heart of everything was the safety of our kids, right? And so, there, there is no, you know, this, this side did this, or this, these folks did that, is everybody was doing and going based on what was the best for our kids, what we understood for the best of our kids. And so, I, I agree with Director Lowry on, you know, the Oregonian editorial piece that, you know, made it seem like it was, it wasn't a rush. We've been dealing with this stuff for eighteen months. It, it wasn't a rush at all, but, you know, once again, everybody's heart and everybody's core value was, was best for the kids. And so, with that, you know, I, you know, everybody knows where I stand as far as, you know, the vaccine piece. I do agree with the district, with staff of, you know, Holland for six months, but I just wanted to let everyone know and, and the public, too, that, you know, everybody on this, on this board, on the staff, on the board, the staff, from everyone down, only best interests of the kid. There was, there is no other our terror motives except for we're looking to do what's best for the kids with the information that we, we've received. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the community understands that, and that's all I got to say.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think if I would say anything, it would be that, to echo what we're all saying, nobody on this board is getting a check. Nobody is, nobody is getting paid.
What you mean? They said we were getting checks. I'm looking for mine in the mail.
They lied, bro, they lied. Nobody gets paid to be here. We're all volunteering our time. We're not lobbying for anything, so there are no lobbyists coming to us saying that if you go this way, that we're going to give you this, or if you go this way, we're going to give you that. We sit here for hours and hours at a time because we're concerned about the well-being of all of the community and not just some of the community. There, there are a lot of people that, that feel one way about it, and there are a lot of people that feel another way about it, and it's, and I believe, it's my personal opinion, that every one of the, every one of the individuals are coming, that are coming to the table, and that are coming to the forefront, truly believe that they're doing what's, what they believe is best. And I don't think anyone, given the, you know, passing them the mic, is going to say, I don't care what kids get hurt, just give me this. Everybody wants what's best for the, the kids and the families that we're serving. And in this instance, by making this pause, we're allowing time for, for families to make a choice. Instead of forcing someone to, you're going to do this and you're going to love it, people are, are given time to, to read about it, they're given time to do research, they're given time to make a decision that fits their family the best and what's going to work within their home, with, with their medical conditions, with their, with their family conditions, that, that's going to work with what they believe to be true and, and real for them. And by not forcing them and allowing them to, to make the decision on their own, I believe that because we all want what's best for our families and for our communities, we're, we're going to arrive at a place where we're making healthy decisions. And it won't be because someone forced you to do it. It won't be because someone told you that you had to do it. It'll be because you had the opportunity to look into it, to research it, and then you did what's best for you. So, the pause, whether it be for six months or whether it be for three, we're giving people time. We're giving people time to, to make a healthy decision for them and their family, and that's what we need right now. People weren't saying that they were against it. They were saying that they wanted to make a choice. They wanted to make the choice, and they didn't want the school district to make that choice for them because we weren't the medical experts. And so, we're allowing the families, I feel, we're giving our families and our communities the opportu, and our students, the opportunities to, to make a choice. Choose, and if you believe that this is going to work for you, then you'll get vaccinated. If you don't believe that this is going to work for you, then you won't, and you'll, you'll do something else. But either way, as a school district, our job is to help you and to educate you and, you know, get you from where you are to where we know you want to be educationally. It's not, we're not medical experts, and so, we shouldn't be making medical decisions. That's my thought on it, so. But thank you, everyone, and I, I do agree with the staff that a pause is necessary.
Thanks, Director Green.
Thank you. I, I also want to add that it, it was, it was disturbing to wake up and, you know, read the Sunday paper and see your name in there. I think, I, I know, nobody knows my mind as well as I do, and I, I felt like our discussions were thoughtful, that we all got plenty of research, pro and con. It wasn't rushed. As Director Holland said, we've been in this for a long time. We've been responsive for eighteen or nineteen months. And that said, I also support a pause. I don't know if six months is the right time because I don't know what's going to happen next month. So, I would like us to be flexible and responsive to the virus, but yeah, I, I feel like this is really the right decision for, for a multitude of reasons, and mostly because Multnomah County residents and our PPS students are already doing the right thing.
Great. Chief Garcia, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to add to Director Green. Speaking of education, tomorrow, Dr. Paul Coakley, who is the superintendent of Multnomah County ESD alongside Superintendent Guerrero, will be hosting a vaccine forum with public health officials, with, with the broader school, all the school districts in the region, really to promote, you know, the, the learning around, you know, this vaccination. And, and so, we'll have public health officials there speaking to some of those, those questions, those common questions that folks have. So, I just wanted to put a plug in there. You can find more information on our websites, and, and we'll promote that tomorrow and tonight through our social media as well.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Chief Garcia. Veed me to the punch on that PSA to Director Green.
Veed me to the punch on that PSA, to Director Green's point on focusing on education. The topic is vaccines for age five to 11 and getting a chance to hear from public health experts. The webinar will be live streamed, so anybody who has, wants to tune in, we invite you to do that.
Great. Additional comments?
Yeah, I have a few. First of all, when we undertook this conversation, it was because in our conversation with our health panel, they made it clear that mandates can and are an effective way to promote increasing vaccination. And that was, that was our goal. So I'm really, I'm very satisfied with where we are tonight. I support this direction and appreciate the work of staff. Mostly, I'm really gratified to see the response of our community and especially the degree of vaccination for our littles in such a short period of time that the vaccine has been available to them. So way to go, Multnomah County, way to go, PPS students and families and guardians and school communities. And, you know, when we had this conversation originally, my concern or my caveats in supporting a mandate were around what does implementation look like? And we really didn't have a lot of information about what quarantine and what exclusion might look like. And we know that those are, those are, those have a huge impact on kids, whether or not they're able to learn in person. You know, I still, we don't need to address this tonight, but I still have a lot of questions around potential implementation scenarios because we know there are school districts all over the place that may not have a mandate per se, but they do differentiate in how vaccinated and unvaccinated students are treated, both in terms of quarantine guidelines, which right now is not really under our discretion. We're pretty much at the, at the mercy of our OHA and MESD in our case, and Multnomah County guidelines there. But also, for example, areas where we do have more discretion are around participation in extracurricular activities and in athletics. And there are all sorts of school districts who are making a, making a difference there in how students are treated. So I would like to have some more conversation in the future around those nuances in our own district as we begin to, you know, as our younger kids have an opportunity to be vaccinated and we begin to see these numbers shift. But mostly, without a mandate, we are seeing the results that we want to see for the safety of our kids and our school communities. And that's good news. So I'm happy with where we are.
Thanks Director Constan. Director Brim Edwards?
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I'll start by saying, because I think it's important to note that I support vaccines as safe and effective. And I wasn't in support of a vote tonight because I felt that there was, there were things that we could do before we got to what I consider to be a hammer. And I think it's important to note that whichever, whatever we thought, whether we should have a vote tonight or not, that the individuals who showed up to sort of bully and create an unsafe environment in our board meeting, really, I thought, created a, a bad environment for us to be making that decision because I think it, it then created an assumption of motives, sort of contrary to the ones that Director Hollins and Director Green talked about. Because I do think everybody is, is coming to this with an open heart, wanting to do what's best for students. And I don't, I don't believe the individuals who showed up and, you know, created an environment that wasn't safe from a health standpoint for people here at the meeting had that in their heart. So I want to say that. I, given that I wouldn't start with the hammer, I really want to applaud the district staff for the work that they've done because from what I know is that people are going to get vaccines when they have access and they have information that they trust about the safety and effectiveness of vaccines. And I think the district is on its way to both providing access, removing barriers, and providing information for families who aren't sure. As Director Lowry says, we all bring different experiences about our trust about government and what somebody says, this is good for you. I remember when my mom told me that. It didn't always feel good for me. So I'm glad and I applaud the district's staff and leadership for the work they're doing. And I think we need to keep doing it. And the question of is this, how long is, you know, should we wait before we consider it, I think is, is an open question. I think we should see, you know, we're going to have, I think with, as we saw with adults, you know, a rush and everybody wanting to get vaccines for those who want it. And they will be willing to wait long lines, travel all of the city, go different places to get that appointment. And then we're going to have a group that needs something different. And as I was talking to Chair DePasso today, I referenced, there was a really interesting New York Times piece on like, who is the unvaccinated among the adults in the, in the country? And yes, there was a group that was, they're not going to get vaccinated regardless, but there were also a big group of, for a whole variety of reasons, whether it was like the shifts they worked for work, with the location of the vaccine clinics. They'd heard somebody, some information that, you know, created questions for them about getting the vaccine, they just needed that last bit of information, but it wasn't people who are like, I'm never going to get vaccinated. But, so I do think we'll have this first wave, which is great, and we'll have provided the access. And then the second piece is like, not those who are like, under a certain, I may get vaccinated, but like, tell me, tell me more. You know, address this concern I have. Provide something in my, at my neighborhood school or during the hours that I can actually get my kids there or when I have childcare. So I think we're on the right track and I really want to applaud staff's effort for that because I think that is the way in which all of our community will feel sort of loved and supported and that we all really are thinking about their, their health. I also support the, the refined position on the exemptions because I think we offered that to, to staff and we have a history of offering it for other vaccines. So I think that's the right consistent position to take. And, you know, if we do raise this, this issue comes up again because that's what we need to get the last, you know, segment over, over the finish line. You know, I think we're going to need to really think long and hard about and hear what the plans are for, you know, what we do if students are excluded. It sounds like from Chief Garcia, maybe, maybe that isn't a common occurrence at the end of the day. But I think it's a fear that we have, that we wouldn't be providing, that we may be excluding students who really need to be in school. So that's something I want to hear more about, but obviously since we're not voting tonight, it's something for a future discussion. But I think we're, I think we're landing in the, in the right place and our families are doing the right thing.
Thank you. Mr. Representative Weinberg?
Yeah, I have a couple thoughts. One, I don't, I'm going to agree with Chair DePasso. I don't like locking us into six months because we could have another surge in December, January, February, March. We honestly don't know what it will look like six months from now. Even with the best projections, we've seen them be wrong. So I don't want us to commit to six months and then we'll consider it. I think we need to be more nimble than that. Also, from the data that I've seen from students and talking with students, I feel like there's a difference between being safe and students feeling safe going to school. So while we all think students are safe going to school right now, there are students who don't feel safe going to school. And we need to take that seriously. So if we're not going forward with this vaccine mandate, then we need to go forward with other mitigation strategies, as in test to stay, COVID-19 screening, which I see coming through. I got the chance to testify in front of the Senate Education Committee on Monday and hear from Colt Gill about the implementation of those and hopefully those are coming soon. But I also expressed at that time that students are super stressed about COVID still. We are still in a pandemic and for students to feel safe, then we need to follow the COVID-19 mitigation strategies that we have in place more. Because I've heard from students over and over again that they don't feel like we are following what we say we are following.
Great, thank you. That's a really excellent point.
Vice Chair Scott, just one second. I just want to thank Representative Weinberg for the student survey and all the work. And it's difficult for me to ever be in a position that is on the other side of the recommendations of our students. It's not really someplace I've ever been on any major decision as I've sat at this dais and, but I also, I really appreciate your willingness to pivot in this moment to talk about what can we do short of a mandate that really helps not just make students feel safe, but helps create more safe environments for our students. And also, you know, appreciate the student activism around encouraging their peers to get vaccinated as well. That's huge and I think it's probably more influential than just about anything else. So I agree with you that I think it's time for us to start to be a little bit more assertive about pushing the conversation on test to stay. You know, right now, it's my impression that the, the powers that be around us are saying that they don't have the capacity to support that. Well, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing and I think it's time for us to say, this is the right thing to do for our students so that we can maximize in-person learning and, you know, push, push everything else out there to enable that to happen. So I'll do whatever I can to help support that, that movement. And Jackson, I just really appreciate your leadership.
Thanks, thanks for that. I will not repeat what my colleagues have said. I agree with, with almost all of it. For me, the biggest, most compelling thing was the fact that our public health agencies are not recommending a mandate at this time. And it's not that I want to punt it over to them, but, but from the beginning, we've said we're going to follow public health guidelines and I think we have done that throughout the pandemic. I look forward to hearing more from OHA and Multnomah County about whether this is a direction they think we should go. And I think we need to be ready, if it is, to pivot very quickly towards that. But I do think they are the public health agencies and we should, we should, we should, you know, let that process play out. I also think it was a really good process and a really good conversation and I'm not embarrassed at all about the fact that my view has, has changed somewhat as we've gone through. I actually think that's the way public debate and discussion should, should work. So I actually take that as a point of pride. The last, last thing I will say though is, and this is just more, again, keeping our focus on it, not, not setting arbitrary timelines, you know, but I read this, you know, stat, which of course makes sense, but I hadn't thought about it. Since July 1, 150,000 Americans have died from COVID. And 50,000 more will die before the end of the year. And it took a second for that to sink in because, you know, we're seeing these numbers, it's 700,000, since July 1, 150,000 people have died in America. And by the end of the year, 50,000 more will die. So all these emails I get from people saying COVID's not a big deal, it's not very serious, why are you guys worried about it? That is just flat out wrong. And, and whether a mandate for our children is the best way to address that or not, I don't know. I think that's an open conversation, but we need to continue doing every single thing we can to mitigate those deaths. And, and those deaths, I want to be really clear, are almost all unvaccinated people, not exclusively, but almost all unvaccinated people. So whatever we can do to increase the vaccination rates in our community are going to go a long ways towards, you know, towards, towards stopping this pandemic and reducing those deaths. And the really good news is that our kids are getting vaccinated, which was also a compelling reason for me. With that, I'm going to bring this discussion to an end and we ate up all the time we had gained at the beginning, but that's okay. It's 8:05. I want to take a five minute break and come back at 8:10 for the Southeast Guiding Coalition discussion, which is a big discussion, and I would like to try and target to end this meeting by nine. So just keep that in mind as we pivot into that. So five minutes, we'll be back at 8:10.
Go Scott. And we still?
Let's go ahead and reconvene Directors Hollins and Green. Hopefully you're still there to join us. As we set up for the next item, Director Brim Edwards, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Vice Chair Scott. I just wanted to note for the record that earlier I asked about a contract and I'd asked some questions and I can only attribute it to the Google laundry shoot that I, I couldn't find them, but I do have the answers and I thank Dr. Proctor for providing those and I'll share them with the rest of the board.
Great, thank you for that. So as we, as we set up, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Guerrero in a second. We're here to talk about the Southeast Guiding Coalition. And, and again, a lot of stuff to talk about tonight. I just want to focus the board's attention. There are going to be, as we go through this presentation, there are going to be four questions that we're going to, that staff are going to want us to weigh in on as we finish this. One of those questions around, is around DLI and whether it's consolidated or not. Another question is around creative sciences, being a K through five or K through eight. A third question is, is whether we delay implementation of Southeast Guiding Coalition issues until fall of 2023. And the final one is whether we put a pause. So just as we're listening to the superintendent and staff, just be, be keeping in mind, I will be coming back to you at the end of this process to ask your view quickly on those four items as we go through it.
I'm going to just interrupt and take a moment to look at our four amazing staff that are here to present. And we have four amazing female leaders that our district is so fortunate to have. And it's just really exciting to walk in the room and see the four of you before us ready to just, you guys are incredible and I am a big fan of all four of you and I'm so excited. And especially three black women who are just killing it. I'm really excited for this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you Director Lowry, that is very worth noting. So appreciate that.
You can see them every Thursday night. If you join the Southeast Guiding Coalition.
Superintendent Guerrero, I will turn it over to-
Well, with that, I kind of feel like maybe I shouldn't say a whole lot because I agree, they're very talented leaders that you have before you. So we have another critically important topic tonight to discuss. I really appreciate Director's previous discussion. I also want to thank Student Rep Weinberg and our student leaders for their work. Thank you for continuing to model and demonstrate the graduate portrait in action. I just want to make a note of that. But now we're on to this topic and just not to provide too much of a recap, but, you know, in June 2019, this board adopted, I think, an ambitious vision. It continues to set a direction, be our North Star for the work we're going to continue to focus on for elevating opportunities, improving outcomes for our students. But we also know that there's these systemic issues that include how we maximize our school building portfolio, facilities utilization, programming placement, et cetera. And so to address some of these issues, we did launch into this enrollment and program balancing process. As you know, phase one of Southeast enrollment and program balancing began in fall 2020. That resulted in the conversion of five K to eights, new boundary and program assignments, including for our newly opened Kellogg Middle School, which opened this fall, which we're excited about. And then in May, the board gave clear direction, adopted a phase two charge that centers on converting Harrison Park from a K eight to a middle, to a middle school and thinking about how we encourage and increase enrollment at Lane Middle School. So for those that haven't been paying attention, that's the two minute recap, but I know everybody is. And so I also am going to turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz and staff who will introduce themselves as well as we hear more about the current conversations and proposals that are emerging from Southeast Guiding Coalition. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Directors. With me tonight, I have Dr. Esther Oma-Bain, our Regional Superintendent, and our Director of Community Engagement, Shanice Clark, and Dr. Shel Proctor, our Chief Academic Officer. And at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. O to talk about the goals of the process and I'm hoping that the presentation is showing somewhere. Great. If we can go to the next slide, please.
Good evening, Board of Directors.
Yes, you are.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Chair DePasso and Superintendent Guerrero. And this evening I'll be speaking with you about Southeast Guiding Coalition, the overarching goals that brought us to where we currently are. And one of the things that we looked at in the second phase that was given to us by, that was a board charge to us, was that we needed to, just like the superintendent said, turn Harrison Park, turn Harrison Park K eight into a middle school, which means we have to find a home for the K five students and also increase the enrollment at Lane Middle School. So we do have to find a way to move some students into Lane Middle School. We also looked at that in the context of redesigning the middle school experience for our students. It is essential because as students move through their adolescent years, that we provide opportunities for them to actually create their own identity around what they like, what they don't like. The experiences they have have a lot to do with that because what we end up having to do is giving them exposure. Well, in order to be able to give them exposure around middle school experiences, we do need certain minimum numbers at schools to be able to provide the electives and the experiences they need. With that, the academic office came up with about 500 students minimum for the middle school and 270 students for the elementary school. Believe it or not, the elementary schools can also get so small that their programs are ineffective. So those were the baseline numbers that we came up with. In trying to then go about- In trying to then go about doing the conversions, we realized that we are going to be impacting programs as well. So some of our programs are co-located, as you know, and some of them are single-strand DLI, whole-school DLI programs. So we looked at that, and we started shifting numbers around, which led to the proposal, next slide, please, which led to the proposals that we created. Proposal A and Proposal B online, you can see them at the proposal website for enrollment balancing on PPS.net. If Kara can click on that, then maybe you can see some of that as well. But in scenario A, what would happen is that Harrison Park will become a regional hub for Spanish and Chinese DLI programs, and will boost neighborhood enrollment through attendance area expansion. Lane also will boost enrollment through attendance expansion. The elementary school, Bridger and Lent, become regular hubs for Chinese and Spanish DLI respectively. Clark becomes the neighborhood K five school for Harrison Park students. Attendance area adjusted to accommodate the dispersal of Bridger and Lent, and boost enrollment for schools no longer co-located with DLI programs. The K eight school for creative sciences moved to Woodstock and enrollment through the neighborhood. The enrollment increased through the neighborhood. In scenario B, Harrison Park joins Kellogg in hosting Spanish DLI, DLI. Lane becomes the regional hub for the Chinese DLI. Both Harrison Park and Lane expand attendance areas to further boost enrollment. The elementary schools, Bridger and Woodstock, become regional hubs for Spanish and Chinese DLI respectively. Lent becomes a whole-school Spanish DLI neighborhood program. Clark becomes the neighborhood K five school for Harrison Park. Attendance areas adjusted to accommodate the dispersal of Bridger and Woodstock neighborhood programs, and boost enrollment for schools no longer co-located with DLI. K eight school, Creative Science, is moved to Alita and enrolled through the neighborhood program. Slide, next slide, please. What surfaced for us as we took a look at Southeast in general is that the K eight enrollment is shrinking. The smaller the K eight program is, the more difficult it is to provide the robust experiences for our middle schoolers especially. And that is essential to establish a strong foundation for them going into middle school and forecasting and planning for their own future. So in order to do that, we, again, came back to the numbers to say, what can we consolidate? What can we move? As we thought about these experiences, we started looking at the programs real closely. At some of the schools, there's such an imbalance between the neighborhood program and the DLI program. The numbers aren't equal. The, as a result of that, there's a lot of climate issues and concerns amongst even staff. So we started looking at how we needed to make the shifts. Furthermore, we realized that our decisions right now will impact high school overcrowding issues. So how do we take that into consideration as we have these conversations? Next slide, please. What we modeled then was based on all the information that we gathered, we created two draft proposals with the help of flow analytics. They adjust that, proposals. We presented the proposals, shared it with Southeast Guided Coalition members and members of the community in various forms. They looked at it. We talked about the pros and cons. We had a Saturday session in which people were allowed to just spend that whole time, about three hours, just analyzing the two proposals. From that emerged a lot of questions, and that generated a desire to create a third proposal, which we're going to get grassroots information from community members and design that. That is in the works right now. That said, next slide, please. All right, so-
Are we holding all questions to the end?
It depends a little on the nature of the question. It's a quick clarifying question.
It's a clarifying question about the work that's being done to create a scenario C. What problem specifically are you trying to solve that's not adequately addressed in scenarios A and B?
We'll, we'll share that in a few minutes.
So one of the things we heard in phase one, from the Harrison Park community especially, is that they do prioritize walkability to school. So if we're going to split them up, they do want the K five section of their program to be within close proximity with the six eight part of their program, so the students can continue to support one another. The other thing that we saw too, in looking at the programs, is that there, when you had two DLI programs in a building, sometimes one was favored over the other, so you had a greater enrollment. Of course, if you have, have greater enrollment, then you can provide a little bit more. And then the group that does not have enough enrollment doesn't get as much support. And in some cases, they actually have a revolving door of teachers, because you can't get the staff in to support them. So we looked at that also, and then we thought about the models that would take future enrollment into consideration. Well, right now, the enrollment is on the decline. We don't know how long that's going to last. Hopefully, it will pick back up very soon, so that's where we are.
So for modeling our neighborhood schools, we utilize the factors that are included in board policy, and that's, most of those are included here on slide six. And on this slide, we're going to turn it to our Director of Community Engagement.
Good evening, Chair DePass, Superintendent, Directors, and Student Representative Weinberg. My name is Shanice Clark, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about what we heard. We really, before these proposals were even developed, wanted to start this work with the listening and learning process to really, with, with folks who are interested, understand their priorities and insight. And so there are major themes that, that came up, especially as we worked with communities of color in this process, that the quality of school and that proximity to, to school, to someone's home were, were not necessarily things that folks wanted to negotiate or have to make a sacrifice between. And so that became very clear as we connected with our Black, Indigenous, and people of color, in addition to what it looks like to, to think about transportation options and access to educators and school programs that are meaningful to them. Diversity in schools also came up as a high priority, and that is something especially for our BIPOC families, that feeling safe when there are other folks, students, families, and people in their community who reflect them and look like them, that, and also share their language and culture, that that is something that came up as a priority in, in the listening and learning phase. And our Harrison Park K five community, in the event that they are moved, really want to move together. And so making sure their racial, ethnic, and cultural diversity is maintained with that shift with the K five community came up very strongly. And that concern that PPS will listen to the loudest voices in the process has also been coming up, and we want to make sure that folks have an equal access and opportunity to share their perspectives and, and feel like they have the space and, and safety to do that. But we understand that there are, in December, too, there will be another effort to reach robust kind of area of students, families, and communities, especially in the impacted schools in the Southeast. And we definitely want to have exclusive spaces, especially multilingual spaces for, and for students, that will be coming up in, in the future. And we can move to the next slide, please.
Director Constan, this is going to answer your question that you asked a minute ago. So the initial staff guardrails for the coalition are in black text on this slide. And in green text, you can see, based on feedback from the Southeast Guiding Coalition, we updated, and specifically, we broadened the range of solutions for DLI programs, including co-locating with neighborhood programs. We have instructed flow analytics to develop a third draft proposal that has co-located DLI programs and addresses as many of the single-strand issues as possible. Okay? So the third, third proposal will move away from the whole-school DLI model to a co-located DLI model. At this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Cheryl Proctor.
So part of, again, the questions that were raised is why whole-school DLI. As you know, or will note, that in Proposal A and Proposal B, it includes notations for whole-school. And the goal of quality DLI program is academic achievement and high proficiency in both partner language and societal language, which is English in this case. The goals are academic achievement, bilingualism and bilinguacy, and cultural competency in other cultures other than a student's particular own. So in terms of a whole-school DLI program, it allows for a cohesive, shared vision and setting of goals that will focus on specific high-quality, rigorous instruction, supporting those, those goals that were identified prior. In a co-located model, there is opportunities to, for teachers to develop professionally together and to have a shared collaboration around instruction and instructional practice. It's sometimes limited, especially for single-strand schools. A co-located model will also, you know, align and leverage resources better to support students and educators regarding linguistically supportive assessments and evaluation systems, the, the ability to hire and retain bilingual staff, and affirm cultural identity for students. So that's, that's really the core to the response for why a whole-school DLI. And it is to strengthen DLI programs here at PPS, where data suggests there is a need to absolutely strengthen the programs and the outcomes for students within those programs.
There were also questions about the creative science, focus option school. And keeping one of our most diverse schools in the Southeast at the center of our work, we recognize that Harrison Park K five students need to walk to a neighborhood school and will be placed in the Clark Building. And that means that Creative Science K eight will need to move. Current proposals include Woodstock or Alita as locations for Creative Science, and the third proposal could include another elementary school. Neighborhood schools attending Woodstock or Alita would be blended into the constructivist approach and community of Creative Science. The number of lottery students will be reduced each year, moving Creative Science to mostly a neighborhood program, as been accomplished at Sunnyside Environmental School. The educational options policy says to offer families choices based on student learning needs and educational interests. Our focus option schools in Southeast have a higher percentage of special education families who have selected these K schools for their students. Some students thrive in a smaller program than, rather than a comprehensive school. This is similar to our multiple pathways to graduation programs for our high school And any student in a focus option school may opt out and return to their neighborhood school. Their neighborhood students, the neighborhood students attending Creative Science may move to a comprehensive middle school for grade six to eight. And there are multiple ways how the changes could occur. The, you as the board will ultimately decide the transition plan. And based on policy, program changes are usually implemented all at once, or at the start of the school year, or at the start of the school year. And neighborhood programs may have boundary changes and feeder pattern changes for future students only, and the board has options to waive rights to transfer based on sibling preference and other hardships to accelerate changes. So we will bring recommendations to you, but it is ultimately that this will be your decision in, as we finalize the plan. On this slide, this is how we're evaluating for racial equity impact on our proposals. You can see that there are three columns. The first, actually, the second column shows all student data. The third column is Black and Native students, and then our English language learners on the students all the way to the right. And what we do is, in the darker colors, that's what the proposal brings in terms of our metrics, and then the lighter colors are what our current baseline is. So for instance, when we have a middle school over 500 student enrollment, it is beneficial to having a thriving program at, at a comprehensive middle school. And currently, we have a baseline of 87.6% of our, all students are in schools over 500, but when you go to our Black and Native, they have only 75% of students. And our ELL as well are only 75%. With this Proposal A, we would get all three groups to 100%, which is optimum. So as you go through each one of these characteristics, you can, we are evaluating how each proposal is measuring up for using a racial equity lens. So we have a slide for Proposal A, and then a slide for Proposal B, and we will do the same for evaluation for Proposal C once it's completed.
Deputy Hertz, can you speak to one of those characteristics regarding utilization? So buildings that would be at greater than 80% utilization?
So at, when a school is 100% utilized, we, when we listen to principals and faculty and students, it feels very crowded. And so at 80%, there's more room to breathe and, you know, there's just more ability to have a more, a thriving program. So we really look at trying to keep that lower. It also gives you a buffer then as enrollment, you know, comes and goes over the years. So we're, an optimum number is 80%, but in, being below, you know, 60 to 100 is okay, but 80 would be optimal.
So the current number of all students is at 58%? Attend a building that's greater than 80%? Proposal A would bring that number down to 30%?
Correct, correct.
In effect, students would have more space in a comprehensive middle school.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And as I remember, that was one of the factors when we talked about Kellogg last year and, and having Creston go to Kellogg last year rather than waiting till this year was that we were going to be above that 80% utilization then at Kellogg.
But I think it's also something that is different than we anticipated when we embarked on this exercise, because our enrollment has declined so precipitously. So when we talked about having to reconfigure to middle schools, we imagined that our middle schools would be more fully enrolled, so-
And I do think, you know-
Created a new problem.
As we think about our, you know, increased declining birth rate in Oregon, like we do continue to have immigration, people moving in, but those folks tend to be, not be families with young children. And so, you know, we do, we are seeing a decline, and we don't know how, how that's going to go. Our, our birth rate's been in decline for over six years now, so it makes sense that we're seeing declines at middle, at elementary school.
So at this point, I would like to open it up for board discussion, and I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Andrew Scott to lead the board through the four questions.
Great, thank you. And as I mentioned at the beginning, there are four.
I have a quick question about-
Sure, we're going to come-
-process before we get to those four specific questions.
Okay, go ahead, Director Lowry.
Which is Whitman. I know that some Lewis students would move to Whitman, and I know Whitman students now go to Lane, but then the Whitman students go to Cleveland for high school. They're kind of like pulled out of Lane in a different way, which was done to increase diversity at Cleveland. Is that still the plan at this point for those?
I can't answer that on the spot.
Okay, just was curious about that.
And you've, you've used your one question, which I was going to give every board member a clarifying opportunity.
That was my one question.
So again, just, so, so here's where we are. As board members, we're going to need to answer these four questions. And again, it's, 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 it's what does the board support in terms of DLI? You know, should creative sciences remain K through eight or K through five? Should we complete the process in February of 2022 but implement a year later in fall of 2023? And then should we consider pausing the SCGC process? Before we get to that, I did just want to sort of just allow more of a popcorn in terms of, are there any clarifying questions of staff? Again, similar to Director Lowry's question, anything along those lines that you need additional information or clarification from staff on? And then, but not everyone feels, don't feel compelled to ask if you don't have a question along those lines. And then we're going to come back, and everyone, we are going to need to hear from board members about each of these four. And again, trying to keep this focused on, on- And again, trying to keep this focused on sort of the decisions that staff really needs from us, or not decisions, I should say guidance that staff needs from us today.
Do we get points if we ask a question that staff can actually answer? Sorry, Claire.
Director Lowry, I believe you've used up your questions.
Yes. No more questions from this side of the dice.
I have two related clarifying questions, and they both pertain to, you know, creation of a new scenario that addresses our DLI schools. And Dr. Proctor, I really appreciated your context and how you framed it because not only are there climate concerns and budget concerns around administering different programs under one roof, but the chief concern is we have not been serving our English language learners especially well in this district. And so we need to do things differently. And that's where our focus needs to be. So there are a lot of reasons why people want to hang on to the way we've always done things and the way things have always been configured. But I just want to be really blunt and say, it's not working especially well. So that's why I appreciated hearing from you as the academic leader of our district on that. But my two questions are, one, Deputy Superintendent Hertz, you said scenario, a potential third scenario, quote, "addresses single-strand DLI as much as possible." So that doesn't sound like to me that we still have a commitment or a bias toward eliminating single-strand programs.
So we are really focused on especially the neighborhood single strands when you have DLI programs that are filling the school in a single-strand neighborhood. That seems to be the most inequitable set of circumstances. So that's one that we're really avoiding. There are certain times, for instance, I'll give two examples for DLI for single strand. One is Russian at Kelly. There aren't enough students to fill two strands in our whole district for a Russian DLI. So that has a different question, but it's not one that we can address in a boundary process because there are no other native Russian-speaking students requesting the program. The second example I would give is Harrison Park has a Mandarin program that's just emerging. And so it needs time to develop. And right now, it's a single strand, and it's where our native speakers live. And so that's another one that we are looking to, you know, we're looking at what possibilities there are to keep it there as well as grow it into, give it time to grow into a second strand.
I'm good, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Sure, Michael.
It's either on or off, apparently. On page two, we had the board's charge for the Southeast Guide Coalition Phase Two, which convert Harrison Park to a middle school, locate Harrison Park K-5, and add students to Lane Middle School. And I don't want it all, set aside the comments about the benefits of addressing the language, the dual-language immersion programs. But when I look at the charge, I'm thinking like this was about getting equitable middle grades. And then when I'm hearing people like, there's all this, like, you need to pause everything. And I'm like, oh, we can't pause like the move towards equitable middle schools because we've really been working towards move to that. So I'm just curious about the confluence of, is this just, happened to do it? Or is it, can it be done in a sequenced way? Or is it the, like, you have to do it or you can't accomplish the converting Harrison Park to a middle school, relocating Harrison, or Harrison Park to K-5 and add students to Lane? Is, do you have to, do you have to do all the language immersion things in order to get the three things that I think was in the board's charge?
So in order to fill Lane Middle School, we have to move students from other middle schools. So that involves schools that have DLI programs. So yes, they are all connected.
To Lane, but not all the other ones? And I'm not arguing for or against it, I'm just trying to understand.
The same is true with. The same is true. We talked about Harrison Park K-5 being at the center of our proposal. And that means then that the Creative Science Focus Option School needs to be moved. And then it needs to be placed in a new, a new school.
So Harrison Park K-5 needs students and Lane.
Go to Clark, the Clark Building where.
And Clark. And Lane. So it's, it's a move to help fill up the buildings in addition to the other benefits. Okay, just, thank you.
Yeah, and this, the question I have isn't going to be able to be answered, but just kind of like a request for like more information on the benefits of the co-located programs. I'd love to see some data on how this would help, I guess. I guess I'm a little biased since I've been in a DLI program for 13 years. I also help my DLI program still. I'm on the Board of Directors for the nonprofit that supports that. So I've just seen the benefits of having a co-located program at Woodstock. So I just kind of want more information on how it's not working or is working at other schools.
And actually, if I could just, because that was very similar to a question I had, and I just really, you laid this out really well in the presentation tonight about, about some of those benefits. And I could imagine if I were, you know, a parent or a student, I might say when you, when you point to these benefits about professional development of teachers and affirmation of cultural identity, the question I might ask is, why can't that happen in a co-located problem, or program? And so I think that would be interesting to hear the staff.
I think it's important to note that in some of our most successful DLI schools and programs, just nationally, they all exist within a whole school setting. Within the co-located model, what I have found is that there are some inequities that emerge as a result of the co-location. Both, there's some missed opportunities, right, for the DLI program to be fully what it can be, and also missed opportunities for the English scholars and what they experience in school. And that really impacts, according to the data, our Black, our Native, and our EL student population. And, you know, there is data available. But when we look at side by side and look at how students are performing across the 24 schools within our district that have DLI programs, our white students perform well. But what the data points out, shockingly, knowing the benefits of DLI, if it's constructed in a way that we can really maximize both the program of DLI itself and maximize what we do for our students who happen to just not be in a DLI program. There's some targeted and really intentional academic programmings that we could provide for them that in a co-located model doesn't always happen. And you want to be, you want to have students in an environment where teachers are able to thrive and collaborate and build, you know, lessons and learning that support their students. And if you have, for example, a single-strand, a single-strand program where there's only one DLI teacher per grade level, those opportunities don't exist. So it really is just based on, yes, starting with the board's charge for restructuring and balancing the enrollment of these schools, but looking at data and using the data to create an opportunity to build stronger equity and stronger academic programs for all students who are in both DLI and students who are not in DLI programs.
Also, just one last thing, just to clarify for like everyone watching and in this meeting, that DLI is not equivalent to ELL, and we shouldn't be like interchanging those two.
Absolutely, and that's such a strong point that you make, that I think we can definitely do some workaround with what we're looking at.
I really appreciate that response. I'm curious in our outreach, did any of those arguments resonate with the communities we were talking to? Because, because, you know, again, I understand that the sense of disruption can be very, you know, dramatic, right, of that. But I'm just, I'm curious, when we sort of lay that out, did that, did that resonate with our families at all? In terms of, even though they might be a little disrupted, there's this long-range vision that, that is, you know, could be, could be even more successful than what they're currently experiencing?
Some of that actually came up in our community conversations, especially with our principals, because what we realized also is that the people who are most impacted, community members who are most impacted, are usually the least ones to come to our meetings and to access our information. So what we did was we asked our principals to create more, smaller forums and opportunities during principal chats, coffee chats, community meetings, where these individuals can actually voice their own opinion. So some of those concerns came up, especially around EL. Because with the EL students, what we realize is they are in the DLI program, but they're not receiving the academic instruction they need to excel and to acquire language. So the dual-language approach, the intention there is for students like Dr. Proctor said, to be biliterate and bilingual and to also experience cultures. But with the EL, it is more about content, access to content work. So when we immerse them in a DLI program, the tendency for them is to get lost in the shuffle. And it is important to note that that comes up, especially with our parents who come to their schools to have conversations about their stuff, and they communicate that to us.
Great, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other clarifying questions, so I think we're going to jump into the four, so, which are still up on the board. Thank you, Cara, for working that magic on our TV screens. And I'm open for volunteers, if anybody wants to go first, or I'll just start calling on board members.
I just, what I just heard, Dr. Proctor, was really compelling for me in terms of what the data says about who's getting served. And I also, I don't know if anybody else here's gone to school in two different countries, actually, three, if you count the US. And I think I know the difference between being in a school in a second language and getting the academic support of experience that versus kind of being warehoused in a school where there's not enough services to provide the academic support as well as, you know, kids learn language. It's not the language that's an issue if you're coming and you don't speak English. It's really the other, the content. And so I would be in favor of the scenarios that, that focus equity, particularly at Harrison Park, where I was a volunteer off and on for years, outdoor recreation programs. And I know there's so many languages spoken in that building. And I know change is hard for people, but I know you can survive going to different schools. And again, really, really in favor of the option that serves our Black and Brown kids. That's, that's what I hear over and over again. And I think this is just one of those difficult decisions about actually implementing that and doing that.
Thanks, Chair DePass. Do you have thoughts on the other three questions as well, since you volunteered for number one, which I really appreciate?
Um, all four?
Yes.
Well, can I go popcorn style?
Well, we were hoping just the board members could go through their four. I think in the interest of time, that'll be the quickest.
My question on number two.
But you can pass if you want.
I'll pass and come back.
Okay, I'll volunteer to go, so we can kick this off. Well, I just, I mean, I think they need guidance from us, and everyone's been here a long time, so. I actually also find it compelling. I think the hardest thing about this first question on DLI really is that we have, I mean, the families really are feeling that disruption, right? And we're hearing that, and I feel it. And I mean, it's, you know, it's real, it's, you know, and they're concerned about what it means. I also really respect all of you and what you bring to the table. And I don't have the policy background in this or the research. And so I am very much willing to defer to the experts, you know, in the room who say, look, when we look at this nationally, this is, this is what we achieve, you know, in terms of really strong DLI programs. And so, you know, I think to the extent we have the evidence and data to support that, to me, I'm supportive of that as well. I do want, I do hope, and this is the optimistic side of me, we can continue to engage the community around what those positive aspects could be. So even though they might feel a loss, they also can see a sense of potential gain in the future, I think would be, would be helpful. Creative Science, I think the reason why I would say K through eight is I know there is, as you talked, a high percentage of special ed kids in, you know, in that program. And I think there's some value there of keeping that K through eight. And the implementing of fall 2023, I do worry about losing some of the benefits, but I also really worry about not being able to staff up for it. And so I think that may, even though that is a policy question you're asking us, it almost makes me wonder, even if we could achieve it, if, you know, if we tried to do it sooner, given some of the staffing, you know, challenges. And I think with all of that, I would, if we're doing that implementation of fall 2023, I think we can continue the SCGC process as it currently stands. You're up.
Okay. Question number one, I, you know, we asked our educational experts about DLI. And I think, you know, as we look at language acquisition and how we best support learners, I do hear that it's traumatic for communities to think about this change. And I really think if we want to achieve that mission statement of a joyful, robust academic experience, that reducing the number of single-strand DLIs we have is vitally important. So I would really, I heard what you said about both Kelly and the Chinese, is it Harrison Mandarin at, Mandarin at Harrison Park? You know, maintaining those for now, but really moving away from single-strand DLI. I do think we need to have a long-term conversation about Kelly and especially as we've seen the population of folks there move out of the district. And as we look at how do we partner to serve those families best with our other MESD partners. I think that, I'm okay with Creative Science either way. I think that there is a need for a small, middle school experience for many of our students, and Creative Science, as well as Sunnyside, can offer that. So I'd be okay with, with either there. I do, I, we heard so much from our teacher listening sessions about staff burnout. I know that we have issues of, like we said, hiring, and can we staff up to this? And as teachers think about anxiety of change on top of everything else. So I, I would be in favor of implementing in fall 2023. I do, it breaks my heart to think about our students who, you know, we saw those graphs of what the impact would be. So I believe it's more student-centered to move ahead and implement in fall 2022. But I also realize, like, if we don't have teachers and people are exhausted and burned out, then we can't serve students. So I would be in supportive of that waiting. And I am not in favor of pausing the process because I think, you know, we're already in this and we're moving forward. And I do think it will help with some of that anxiety for people to know what the plan is. Because I think part of what we're hearing from folks is that stress of uncertainty.
Director Brimlett.
Thank you. So on the first question, I have, I think I want to elevate sort of two principles, and I'm not sure I'll answer it all, because I think it's a little bit different at each of the schools. But, you know, really elevate what the native speakers in the program need. That's one thing. And, and this may seem contradictory, but also what is happening in those buildings in which we have single-strand neighborhood programs? Because what I have seen over and over again over the last 20 years in southeast Portland is a co-located program come in. Come in, sometimes it's a language program, sometimes it's something else. And eventually, you get down to one strand, to the neighborhood program. And then it's like, then we close Brooklyn, which is now Winter Haven, or we close Sunnyside Element, the neighborhood program, and it becomes an environmental school. So I also am concerned about the neighborhood, the single strands, so keeping that piece. So I'm for a solution which elevates native speakers and what they need and what you all say is best, best for them in those programs. And then also paying attention to, you know, when we, if there is a co-location, what about those neighborhood single strands? Creative Science, K-8, so for the record, when it became a program, it was a K-5, and it was at Bridger. And so I think I have an open mind. I'm concerned about if it is co-located or if it's. The Sunnyside model, I think, works. The question I would have is, the Sunnyside program is more about a curriculum versus a pedagogy? I'm out of my lane here, but. And so the question is, with Creative Science School, is that, I think kids can adopt any curriculum, but is it, is Creative Science the right pedagogy for all neighborhood kids? So I want to know the answer to that. And also, my first interaction with the program at Bridger was there were significant issues with the PAT contract because that's not a distinguishing reason. So like, because the staff, say if it was at Arlida, the staff at Arlida, whoever has seniority, has seniority. whoever has seniority, has seniority versus a Creative Science School teacher? So there's like PAT issues that I think we would, we would need to address.
Yes, we'd need to follow the PAT contract, and our HR leadership is prepared to do that work with our PAT.
My first issue in 2001 was a teacher who was lowest on the seniority, well, but was a Creative Science Program teacher, and she's.
Just want to keep us focused on the question.
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious about how we'd even implement it. So the five versus eight, I mean, I think there's other issues besides whether it's five versus eight. But I don't philosophically have an issue with, they don't need to all be in the same building. I think we have, you can have a smaller program at another middle school. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's the question that drives the solution. The third one, I would want to see the timeline. It seems like last spring, we clearly told people we were going to implement next year. So I would want to know why we were changing that, because that seems like just, just last year, we were in a pandemic and everything else. So I'm not sure I understand that, and I feel a lot of, there were some communities like, hey, we didn't get into Kellogg, but we know you're going to deal with us and help us next year. So I want to hold on to that. And so, of course, my answer on number four would be no.
Thank you. Director Constan?
Got you.
And actually, before you go, Cara, it looks, it seems like Herman got kicked out, or are we working on reconnecting? And anyway, he's trying to get back in, I'm not sure exactly where he is, but hopefully we can find him.
So I think, generally speaking, I support a whole school DLI model, and I think it can be successful. I'm also flexible where we have two strands of each, and it's balanced. I am flexible to that kind of co-location. I really am going to push us all to work very hard to eliminate any single strands on any side, because we know it's inequitable, and it just doesn't work very well. I appreciate Director Lowry bringing up the point about Kelly, which I think is an anomaly in our district. So I don't want us to just look at it in terms of being a single strand for a language. It is also an anomaly, and then it has a high percentage of students from outside of our district. So we need to really look at our financial burdens there, our operational expenses there, and have a broader view about what are the right decisions there? Because it's, it doesn't, it doesn't fit with the rest of these.
And Director Constan, I just want to highlight that you and I have talked about Kelly a little bit recently. And for both of us, it's like, what is best for those families, right? If they're having to commute in, is it really the best thing for them to have to come into Kelly? Like, how do we best serve those students in this Kelly that answer? So that's a whole separate, but I want us to be clear, it's not just about money or operations. It's really about how does our community as a whole best serve those children?
Absolutely appreciate your saying that. And to me, our community as a whole there means a conversation with, you know, three or four neighboring districts to look at the, you know, Russian-speaking families in our community writ large, and how do we all serve them? Creative Science, you know, we've really heard from a lot of families about why they have sought that option for their children, and particularly why they don't feel that their children would be best served exclusively in a, in a large middle school. And I think a lot of that really makes sense, and if we're trying to meet our students where we are, I think it's nice to have, have that option. So I could support that. And again, it's been said, I think we should, I don't think we should pause the process. I do think we should move forward, but I think at this point, implementation next year is not very realistic for us, based on our staffing constraints and all of our other constraints. So just trying to be pragmatic there. And what was my other thing I was going to mention? Oh, you know, we didn't, we haven't really talked about it in depth. But, but to me, when we talk about co-location of DLI programs, it's a really different discussion for elementary programs versus middle school programs. Because, you know, in middle school, the language is an elective for those students. And so it really decreases a lot of the other factors in terms of why students need to be in a larger, comprehensive middle school. And if they're taking their language and they have one other elective, there's no reason they can't be well-served in a K eight. And so we need to be open about having some flexibility there and considering our middle grade students in DLI programs a little differently than our elementary school programs. And I just haven't heard a lot of discussion about that in this process.
I think the challenge with middle school is having two programs at one school. Because one happens to thrive, and then the other one does not do it as well. So that's the challenge with the middle school.
Yeah, and, and just, you know, to me, one of the most compelling examples of the challenges of co-location is the stories that we hear from Beach now. I mean, were it not for the, for the students coming in from outside the neighborhood catchment for the DLI program, Beach would still be a Title I school with a lot of additional supports in their building that they don't have now, because in aggregate, they have all these students coming in that are whiter and more affluent and changing the composition of the school. And it, it, it changes how we operate it and what resources are available. So that's a really stark example that is meaningful to me.
Great, thanks. Jackson?
Yeah, I agree, single strand historically and currently is not serving students best. I do think there are some benefits that weren't outlined around co-location, where it is an even strand on neighborhood and DLI sides. I'd also just like to know more about, kind of like, why we think this is best practice? Again, just, I'll probably talk to Dr. Proctor about it more offline. I guess my main concern with consolidation is kind of like the impact for the rest of the district. So we have co-located programs in northeast, in North Portland as well. I'm thinking especially for Mandarin Chinese MLK Junior, we would leave that strand open. There's no possibility to consolidate that, because there is no other Mandarin Chinese in northeast. So we'd be making that decision, I guess, to leave that as a co-located program. So just kind of thinking about larger district-wide implications of consolidation in southeast and how we could or could not keep doing that in northeast and North Portland. As for Creative Sciences, K eight versus K five, I honestly don't really have much of an opinion. I'd kind of defer back to your expertise on that one. And for implementation for fall of 2023, if we are pushing it back, then I'd like to see not a pause on the Southeast Guiding Coalition process, but scheduling more meetings, because I think we're hearing from Southeast Guiding Coalition that they feel like they need more time to discuss it.
Great.
May I just weigh in finally on questions three and four? I don't think we should pause the Southeast Guiding Coalition. I, I thought about this long and hard from just a staff capacity, and I think it should go ahead. I think we need to, if we made a promise, we need to keep it. I'm also wondering on question three about implementation in the fall of 23. I guess, yes, I think if we need more time for staffing processes to do it well, then that would be a yes. I'm really concerned about fortitude, and that's a crazy word to throw out, because we're tired and everybody's stressed out. But at some point, I wonder when we, when we build ourselves up, when we, how do we develop resilience and fortitude? And it's just a question I have lingering about this COVID and how we're responding and how I'm responding. At some point, we need to model fortitude for our students as well. In fact, going to another school is, a change is difficult, and it's also survivable.
Great, thank you. Director Hollins?
Oh man, it's a lot, a lot to digest in the process. No, I don't have a whole lot of positions on some of these. For a lot of these, I'm going to just defer to instructional experts on these. You know, I think they are more adept to deal with these questions than I am. But I do have a question about the pausing of the process. Can I realize that this was a board-led initiative? And I'm just curious on how this goes with the board goals and how it lines up with the board goals? Anybody on the board can answer.
One thing I would say is that with the opening of Kellogg, that I think addressed a huge equity issue in the middle grades in outer southeast. And if you look just historically, the last 15 years, most of the under-enrolled K eights were mostly in, on the, on the east side and either outer, outer southeast or inner northeast. And the desire to get more equitable programming is, was one of the driving factors between, behind Phase One, and, which was completed thanks to staff and done well. And Phase Two was to finish that process. So to me, it's very much aligned with our middle grades' goal and also our focus on equity. Lowest-income zip codes in outer southeast were in some of the lowest enrolled K eights with the least equitable offerings.
Director Hollins, did you have any, any other input on the questions?
No, I'm just trying to look, you know, from what Director Brimmer was saying and trying to connect that with the board goals that I'm reading here as far as the achievement piece for African-Americans and Native American students. And I'm still not necessarily seeing that connection. And maybe this was because it was a decision that happened, you know, before I got here or something. I just, I'm just worried about that, you know, we're derailing on our, our mission of educating our kids. I know this could be a long-term solution, but I just, I just wonder if now is the right time to do that? Just, that's a thought. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
I guess I also would just point out that, you know, part of this is unfinished business from constituting Kellogg. And so it's, I don't think a pause is responsible, because we had great impacts on Lane, for example, with, with the configuring of Kellogg. So there are a lot of inequities that need to be addressed that, because we kind of kicked the hornet's nest when we built beautiful new school.
Okay. Jackson, did you have a question?
Yeah, my just, whoa. My quick question was just like, in the future with these discussions, I want to see more how we're engaging students, because really, students are the ones that will be living out all of these decisions. And parents really won't, but all of the engagement that I've seen so far really has focused on parents. So just in the future, I'd love to see more on that.
Great. Director Green, did you get the questions? I know you're having a hard time seeing them as you're connecting.
Oh, can y'all hear me right now?
We can hear you, yep.
I haven't been muted this whole time, I'm glad I was being quiet. That is outstanding. So I'm, I guess I'm a little out of the, out of the equation. I did meet with Claire, and we were able to go over some of this. But this is a lot, for me, this is a lot to take in. I'm not saying, to me, if a community is, or if the people are asking for a pause, in, in light of everything that's happened, I don't see a, a reason why we shouldn't be able to pause. But then, again, like I said, I don't know a whole lot about this. And maybe it's because I haven't read all the documentation. But, you know, I just, it's hard for me to make a position statement. And so I'm glad that we're not voting on anything right now, because I would definitely have to, I would definitely have to pass or abstain if we were. But I do value, I do value the opinion of Dr. O and Dr. Proctor and Shanice and all the, and Claire and all the work that they're doing. But I also want to make sure that we're, we're listening to the community, and not just the community that wants it, but the community that's going to be impacted by it. So that we're, we're hearing both sides. If this is about, if this is truly about equity, I want to make sure that as we're looking at this and we're talking about whether we kick it down the can, whether we pause it, whether we do it, that we, that I'm doing that through, through the lens of equity. And I want to make sure that I understand what it is that I'm looking at. I don't want to see men as trees, I want to see men clearly. And so at this point, for me, I just have to, before I can make a decision, before I jump on this, before I vote one way or another, I would definitely have to schedule another meeting with Claire, Dr. O, Dr. Proctor, and Shanice, to really get a clear understanding of what it is that we're talking about, so.
Great.
So Director Green, I just want to show you that we are doing everything that we can within our power to reach out to the communities that are most impacted. One of the things that we've put in place is opportunities for them to actually attend meetings at their own school. There are people who will not come to the district office or will not necessarily speak with us, but they will speak with their principals, because their children go there, and that's a trusted environment for them. And our principals are doing a lot to reach out to them. They're also reaching out to us for support when they need support in those meetings. So we are out there.
Great. Thank you, board, I think that was a good conversation. I hope staff got enough information.
We appreciate the board's full attention to this matter tonight, thank you.
Great.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, just, it's something I don't understand, and maybe I might have a different answer, but, and I can give you an answer. But when it says that more time for the staffing processes, is that because, I guess I don't understand. So right now you have staff in the schools, and there'd be a lot of moving around, but is, what is the staffing issue? Sorry, I should have asked at the very beginning, but when I was listening to my response, it was like, maybe I don't understand what the staffing issue is, because it's like we have staff.
There are very distinct processes that have been followed in the, in the contract for teachers.
Is this like the PAT issue I raised?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I got it, thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Superintendent?
Yes, there's a particular process we have to observe that takes time. If you note sort of the timeline here that we're contemplating, the time we'll need on top of that for this process before we can do all of our other typical staffing processes, which can't start. So there's just a big risk here and sort of, and an already sort of staffing shortage that we're facing, the ability to staff up the entire district in time. So it's a whole other topic, but it really is a big, we should, we need to underline the importance of sort of that, that issue. And what's weighing on me right now is something Director Holland said around, you know, how is doing this work, getting this to our student achievement outcome goals? And, you know, this is a decades-long issue. When we don't have a healthy balance of enrollment across the school portfolio, it creates inequitable opportunities. I mean, it'd be more amplified if we funded all of them exactly the same. We don't, we can correct for some of that, but we know that it creates opportunities for students and the offerings that are available to them. I think moving students, you know, more of our students into comprehensive middle schools opens up opportunities for more of our students, particularly in areas of town that have a net access to it. But for me, that's just the first part, that's just a first step. What matters is what happens in those buildings. And so that's why, you know, I'm more excited about our middle school redesign and innovation work, because we're not just trying to move them there to do the same stodgy six, seven period day. And so that middle grades is an excellent opportunity to really rethink how we, we were just having this conversation upstairs earlier today, to really focus on youth development, on a strong sense of social emotional learning. We see what's happening in our middle schools right now. How do we get kids to really understand themselves and grow a sense of self-agency and identity? How do we get them to go into high school ready with having explored a variety of pathways and opportunities so that they go into high school sort of more prepared with a plan about what they want to pursue when they get there? So there's so much work to do there. We talked about an eighth-grade capstone that would encapsulate their growth and their time in the middle grades. That's the work that we're looking forward to doing. That's the outcome that I know this board. That's the outcome that I know this board has talked about on many evenings. So I think ultimately, that's the work we're trying to get to. This is, this is a matter of sort of moving students around to try to create some more equitable enrollment balancing. And that's the objective here, but the ultimate one is better outcomes and experiences for our students.
Great. I think that's an excellent way to end this conversation. Thank you very much to staff. Thank you, Superintendent, for the conversation tonight. We're going to move on to our last substantive item. This is the Oregon School Board Association Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee Representatives. So the Board will now provide, provide a voice vote on OSBA officers and an OSBA resolution. Board members, there's an official OSBA ballot in your packet and we will vote on each position and resolution in order as presented on that ballot. With that, Elizabeth Durant from Park Rose is running unopposed for position 17 on OSBA's Legislative Policy Committee. So we're going to move straight to a vote. I don't think we need a motion on this, right? We can just move straight to a vote. All in favor of Elizabeth Durant, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And any abstentions? All right, looks like that's 7-0. Chris Hoit is running unopposed for position 18 on the OSBA Board of Directors. All in favor of Chris Hoit, please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? All right, and Jessica?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, one abstention. And then Jessica Arzate from Multnomah Education Service District is running unopposed for position 18 on OSBA's Legislative Policy Committee.
Arzate.
Thank you. All in favor of Jessica Arzate, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And any abstentions? Great. And this year, there were no candidates seeking position 19 on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee. It's too bad. Results of tonight's vote will be submitted to OSBA after this meeting. Other business or committee referrals? Is there any other business this time before we adjourn? Seen none. The next regular meeting of the Board will be held on December 14th. This meeting is adjourned. Holland and Green, can we just go back? And if you could indicate your votes for Elizabeth Durant, Chris Hoit and Jessica Arzate?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
All good?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, do I finally get a gavelist? All right. Thank you.